This meeting of the Kirkland Planning Commission is called to order. Let's start with a roll call.
Rhea Heiser. Erin Jacobson.
Here.
Gina Madea.
Here.
Scott Reiser.
Here.
Justin Robbins.
Here.
Angela Rosman.
Here.
Rodney Rutherford.
Here. And with a quorum, with the majority of the commissioners present, we have a quorum. So next is comments from the audience.
Can I say something really quick? Just for anyone who is commenting not on the public hearing but potentially talking about parking, I just wanted to bring notice to everyone that the state has passed a couple of parking bills this year that would limit parking requirements to .5 per unit and none for under 1,200 square feet. So if that is part of what you want to say, I just wanted to give you a heads up and let you focus on the stuff that we can take into advisement. You're welcome to talk about parking. I just wanted to give you heads up so if you wanted to spend your time talking about other things, you can do so.
Thank you, Commissioner Rosman. All right. With that, I will introduce the next item on our agenda is... Yes. I'm about to introduce that item. It is items from the audience. This is the portion of the meeting when we hear from the public about items that are not scheduled for public hearing. Tonight's public hearing is for proposed zoning code amendments to codify the city's ability to adopt development agreements. In order to hear from as many... So this will not be covering that section. We'll cover that later. This is for any other topic. In order to hear from as many people as possible tonight, we are allowing any individual wishing to provide comments to speak for a maximum of three minutes. The timer on the lectern will flash a yellow light when 30 seconds remain and a red light when your time has ended. To be fair to all speakers, we will adhere strictly to the three-minute limit. The commission wants to hear from as many different views and opinions as possible. If you have already heard another speaker state your comment, please consider not repeating that comment and instead provide a comment or perspective that is unique to you. In making your comments, we ask that you please direct them to the commission, but this is not a time for give and take with the commission. Obscene, profane, threatening, harassing, or abusive language towards the commission, city staff, or those in the audience is not allowed. As audience members, please refrain from any demonstrative agreement or disagreement with a speaker such as clapping, cheering, or booing. These actions are not only disruptive, they may also intimidate or have the effect of excluding others in the community whose views may differ. We'll begin, items from the audience, with a list of people here in person that have signed up to speak. When I call your name, please approach the dais to address us. Online, audience members may indicate that you wish to speak by raising your hand in the Zoom meeting now. When it is your turn to speak, we will admit you into the virtual room as a panelist, so please remain muted until I call your name, and then you may unmute to address the commission. So the first signed in tonight is, and only for in-person comments, is Kate Conant. And after that, we'll have Brady Nordstrom on the online.
Thank you for this opportunity, and thank you for your hard work on behalf of our Kirkland community. My name is Kate Conant, and I live in the Waneta neighborhood of Kirkland. I'm commenting on attachment number two, the JBD4 rezone of the Michaels-Cathcally sites. My focus is on the development standards of public benefits, pedestrian access, and walkways. Attachment number two recommends improving the walkways along the busy intersection at the Waneta, at the intersection of Waneta Drive and 100th Avenue. I'm thankful for these improved sidewalk recommendations, however, the pedestrian access recommendations do not go far enough. We need improved sidewalks on the southwest corner and a version of option A, a through-block pathway, which is, I believe, the term you're using, between Waneta Beach and Waneta Bay Parks. The citizens of Kirkland need a greenway path at the site allowing them to move between the parks surrounded by the unique natural features of this lakeside environment. I don't need to tell you that Kirkland citizens value their connected green space, parks, and lakeshore. It's in the Waneta Neighborhood Plan Vision Statement and throughout the Neighborhood Plan policies. Those of you who attended the Kirkland Community's Foundation's Recent For the Love of Kirkland event also heard an outpouring of love for our parks, trails, the lakeshore, the lake, water, natural views, and nature. The rezone is a small window in time to grant future citizens something that will bind their love to the city of Kirkland. As more future citizens of Kirkland live in high-rises and inhabit increasingly dense neighborhoods, open space and recreation opportunities must also expand. There's an existing shoreline path that's currently underutilized, also dubbed "The Path to Nowhere." This pathway goes through the Waneta Shore's condos property and follows the lakeshore along the water where it dead-ends at the Cathcally property line. An easement through the lower Cathcally property should be part of this plan for pedestrian access benefits. An eastbound path would parallel the shoreline, starting at the existing Waneta Shore's condo segment, go across the Cathcally property on an easement, and then pass through natural city-owned lakeshore property connecting to the Waneta Bay causeway. My email to the Planning Commission shows illustrations of this proposal as well as another alternative proposal. In attachment number two, option A mentions that there are challenges to creating a through-block pathway connecting the parks. For the love of Kirkland and for the future of Kirkland, don't dismiss this option just because there are challenges. No matter how well-designed the sidewalks, the nature-loving citizens of Kirkland deserve more than a sidewalk. We need an easement, and we need to connect the parks. Thank you again for your hard work for a livable future Kirkland.
Thank you, Kate. Next is Brady Nordstrom on online. Go ahead.
Hi there. Greetings. My name is Brady Nordstrom, and I'm here to comment on the housing opportunity in Waneta through the rezones in the study session, item A. I'm here talking as the Housing Development Consortium, which is a nonprofit with a mission to ensure that everyone in King County has a safe, stable, and affordable place to call home. And we have hundreds of members in King County that build, design, and operate affordable housing, and members that provide vital services to people in crisis. And this includes organizations that provide housing and services in Kirkland. And so, as part of my affordable housing policy work, HCC builds partnerships like the Eastside Housing Roundtable where community and affordable housing voices are joined by unlikely partners from the business and private development community in areas of agreement. And one of the core areas of agreement is enabling sufficient housing capacity, and this is really meant to be a tool that is necessary for affordability, economic stability, and then just stable community. And there's a reason that housing prices in Kirkland have been going up so rapidly over the preceding decades, and there's a reason that so many adult children find it harder to come home as their parents age. And there's a reason that many people who work in Kirkland do not live in Kirkland and add vehicles to the rush hour traffic that... Excuse me. So Kirkland has not been growing to meet minimal housing targets that all cities in Washington are responsible to meet. And this is because housing growth is about more than just sufficient capacity. It's also about what prevents housing on individual parcels. So this could be economic conditions, the age of existing buildings, concerns about change, and there's also well-intentioned development standards and processes that go awry. So I'm not here really to say anything about specific development standards, but I am here to ask for outcomes. These parcels in these neighborhood centers are ideal places for housing growth that can help meet Kirkland's housing and affordability goals. These goals were the result of extensive community engagement. So it's more about just asking you to keep the solutions-oriented mindset and thanking you for taking these important rezones, and then just ensuring that whatever recommendations you advance, that there'll be real results that meet Kirkland's housing goals and affordable housing needs. And with the inclusionary zoning that exists in Kirkland, a portion of any of the housing that goes in will be affordable to retailer workers, young professionals, and other people in the community. So concerns about traffic and change and all these other things are very real, but change is also an opportunity to bring forward the things that we care about most while leaving behind what no longer serves us. So thank you again for thinking about affordable housing as you're talking about these rezones in Waneta.
Thank you, Brady. Is there anyone else online or in the room who would like to speak? Go ahead and come up, Liz, and introduce yourself.
Hi, commission and staff. Liz Hunt, Kirkland resident. Sorry, it's tough to get here by 6 o'clock, so I didn't get signed up. I also want to speak to the zoning amendments being proposed for the Waneta areas. And I just have a couple topics that I wanted to touch on. The first of those is transportation and transportation concurrency. That was very forward-looking of the transportation folks to, in the 2024 concurrency report, to include the requested increases that are being discussed here. So the report says that it includes those potential growth, that potential growth. But I note that in that plan, it only adds one mitigation as being something to put in the transportation plan for that growth, and it is adding one northbound turn lane on 98th Avenue at the intersection with Waneta Drive and 116th, so right by the Michaels property. So the one mitigation project in there is to add an additional left turn.
Heads up, so if you wanted to spend your time talking about other things, you can do so.
Thank you, Commissioner Rosman. All right, with that, I will introduce the next item on our agenda is... Yes, I'm about to introduce that item. It is items from the audience. This is the portion of the meeting when we hear from the public about items that are not scheduled for public hearing. Tonight's public hearing is for proposed zoning code amendments to codify the city's ability to adopt development agreements. In order to hear from as many... So this will not be covering that section. We'll cover that later. This is for any other topic. In order to hear from as many people as possible tonight, we're allowing any individual wishing to provide comments to speak for a maximum of three minutes. The timer on the lectern will flash a yellow light when 30 seconds remain and a red light when your time has ended. To be fair to all speakers, we will adhere strictly to the three-minute limit. The commission wants to hear from as many different views and opinions as possible. If you have already heard another speaker state your comment, please consider not repeating that comment and instead provide a comment or perspective that is unique to you. In making your comments, we ask that you please direct them to the commission, but this is not a time for give-and-take with the commission. Obscene, profane, threatening, harassing, or abusive language towards the commission, city staff, or those in the audience is not allowed. As audience members, please refrain from any demonstrative agreement or disagreement with a speaker such as clapping, cheering, or booing. These actions are not only disruptive, they may also intimidate or have the effect of excluding others in the community whose views may differ. We'll begin items from the audience with a list of people here in person that have signed up to speak. When I call your name, please approach the dais to address us. Online, audience members may indicate that you wish to speak by raising your hand in the Zoom meeting now. When it is your turn to speak, we will admit you into the virtual room as a panelist, so please remain muted until I call your name, and then you may unmute to address the commission. So the first signed in tonight is, and only for in-person comments, is Kate Conant. And after that, we'll have Brady Nordstrom on the online.
Thank you for this opportunity, and thank you for your hard work on behalf of our Kirkland community. My name is Kate Conant, and I live in the Wanita neighborhood of Kirkland. I'm commenting on attachment number two, the JBD4 rezone of the Michaels-Cathcally sites. My focus is on the development standards of public benefits, pedestrian access, and walkways. Attachment number two recommends improving the walkways along the busy intersection at the Wanita, at the intersection of Wanita Drive and 100th Avenue. I'm thankful for these improved sidewalk recommendations, however, the pedestrian access recommendations do not go far enough. We need improved sidewalks on the southwest corner and a version of option A, a through-block pathway, which is, I believe, the term you're using, between Wanita Beach and Wanita Bay Parks. The citizens of Kirkland need a greenway path at the site allowing them to move between the parks surrounded by the unique natural features of this lakeside environment. I don't need to tell you that Kirkland citizens value their connected green space, parks, and lakeshore. It's in the Wanita Neighborhood Plan Vision Statement and throughout the Neighborhood Plan Policies. Those of you who attended the Kirkland Community's Foundation's recent For the Love of Kirkland event also heard an outpouring of love for our parks, trails, the lakeshore, the lake, water, natural views, and nature. The rezone is a small window in time to grant future citizens something that will bind their love to the city of Kirkland. As more future citizens of Kirkland live in high-rises and inhabit increasingly dense neighborhoods, open space and recreation opportunities must also expand. There's an existing shoreline path that's currently underutilized, also dubbed "The Path to Nowhere." This pathway goes through the Wanita Shores condos property and follows the lakeshore along the water where it dead-ends at the Cathcally property line. An easement through the lower Cathcally property should be part of this plan for pedestrian access benefits. An eastbound path would parallel the shoreline, starting at the existing Wanita Shores condo segment, go across the Cathcally property on an easement, and then pass through natural city-owned lakeshore property connecting to the Wanita Bay causeway. My email to the Planning Commission shows illustrations of this proposal as well as another alternative proposal. In attachment number two, option A mentions that there are challenges to creating a through-block pathway connecting the parks. For the love of Kirkland and for the future of Kirkland, don't dismiss this option just because there are challenges. No matter how well-designed the sidewalks, the nature-loving citizens of Kirkland deserve more than a sidewalk. We need an easement, and we need to connect the parks. Thank you again for your hard work for a livable future Kirkland.
Thank you, Kate. Next is Brady Nordstrom on online. Can you go ahead?
Hi there. Greetings. My name is Brady Nordstrom, and I'm here to comment on the housing opportunity in Wanita through the rezones in the study session, item A. I'm here talking as the Housing Development Consortium, which is a nonprofit with a mission to ensure that everyone in King County has a safe, stable, and affordable place to call home, and we have hundreds of members in King County that build, design, and operate affordable housing, and members that provide vital services to people in crisis. And this includes organizations that provide housing and services in Kirkland. And so, as part of my affordable housing policy work, HCC builds partnerships like the Eastside Housing Roundtable where community and affordable housing voices are joined by unlikely partners from the business and private development community in areas of agreement. And one of the core areas of agreement is enabling sufficient housing capacity, and this is really meant to be a tool that is necessary for affordability, economic stability, and then just stable community. And there's a reason that housing prices in Kirkland have been going up so rapidly over the preceding decades, and there's a reason that so many adult children find it harder to come home as their parents age, and there's a reason that many people who work in Kirkland do not live in Kirkland and add vehicles to the rush-hour traffic that... Excuse me. So Kirkland has not been growing to meet minimal housing targets that all cities in Washington are responsible to meet. And this is because housing growth is about more than just sufficient capacity. It's also about what prevents housing on individual parcels. So this could be economic conditions, the age of existing buildings, concerns about change, and there's also well-intentioned development standards and processes that go awry. So I'm not here really to say anything about specific development standards, but I am here to ask for outcomes. These parcels in these neighborhood centers are ideal places for housing growth that can help meet Kirkland's housing and affordability goals. These goals were the result of extensive community engagement, so it's more about just asking you to keep the solutions-oriented mindset and thanking you for taking these important rezones, and then just ensuring that whatever recommendations you advance, that there'll be real results that meet Kirkland's housing goals and affordable housing needs. And with the inclusionary zoning that exists in Kirkland, a portion of any of the housing that goes in will be affordable to retailer workers, young professionals, and other people in the community. So concerns about traffic and change and all these other things are very real, but change is also an opportunity to bring forward the things that we care about most while leaving behind what no longer serves us. So thank you again for thinking about affordable housing as you're talking about these rezones in Wanita.
Thank you, Brady. Is there anyone else online or in the room who would like to speak? Go ahead and come up, Liz, and introduce yourself.
Hi, commission and staff. Liz Hunt, Kirkland resident. Sorry, it's tough to get here by 6 o'clock, so I didn't get signed up. I also want to speak to the zoning amendments being proposed for the Wanita areas, and I just have a couple topics that I wanted to touch on. The first of those is transportation and transportation concurrency. That was very forward-looking of the transportation folks to, in the 2024 concurrency report, to include the requested increases that are being discussed here. So the report says that it includes those potential growth, that potential growth. But I note that in that plan, it only adds one mitigation as being something to put in the transportation plan for that growth, and it is adding one northbound turn lane on 98th Avenue at the intersection with Wanita Drive and 116th, so right by the Michaels property. So the one mitigation project in there is to add an additional left turn going northbound. And that may or may not be sufficient to deal with the growth, which, that's already an almost failing intersection as it is at PM peak. So something to consider. The second item that I wanted to mention is the transit in that area. There is a mention in the staff report that there is daily, you know, there is bus service going through that area. But I would like to note the distinction between what is in the bus schedule and what runs actually occur for those buses. I live near that area, and constantly during the day, I'm getting notifications, "Bing, this bus run is not running today," and three others. You know, "Bing, this bus run is not running today either." So schedule's one thing, actual buses that occur is another thing. So something to be considered. And I believe I have a third item to mention, if I can find it. Oh, I know what it was. The attachments that were, that are in the packet showing the tables of proposed development standards very thorough, impossible to read. They're very wide, very large, and I would request a different formatting in the future because trying to make my screen bigger and trying to print, it was very difficult to read them. So thank you very much. I look forward to the discussion.
Thank you, Liz. Yep, go ahead and come up to the mic and introduce yourself.
I've never done this before. I'm just coming here today because I live on a...
Why don't you introduce yourself first, though? Tell us who you are.
Oh, I'm Kathy Schmahall. I live in Kirkland on 100th and 116th. So I experience, like, traffic. Every day, it's backed up, 116th, almost like six, seven, eight blocks for, like, from 4:00 to 5:30, 6:00. And it, I can't imagine putting seven-story where Michaels is right now and having that many people live there, because it's, if anybody lives there, you know, it's like a one-way turn-in, and you can't turn in, well, you have to, like, get in a center lane to turn into it, and it, and coming out, it's a one-way going the other way, unless you go down around a building, and it's just, it's really backed up. And I can't think that this is a good place to put a building with seven stories with that many people, because around Market Street going from, like, that Cathala restaurant all the way to Wanita Bay where they walk, that thing is backed up, and up the hill and up Market Street. I just came here to this meeting, and it's all the way around, backed up, all the way up the street to the light in front of Wanita Bay. And I would think they'd be able to find a place a little bit better than where it's just gonna be a cluster. Every day, it's like that. And it just seems like it's gonna take away from the environment, too, right there on the beach. I don't know. Thank you for listening, and hopefully you guys take a drive over there before you decide, because you're gonna be stuck in traffic around this time every day, in the mornings, in the afternoons. It's just like, to turn in, it's unreal. So, thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Any others who would like to address the commission in items from the audience? Seeing none, we'll proceed to the next item on the agenda, special presentations of which there is none. So we will move into our public hearing on zoning code amendments to codify the ability to adopt development agreements. Should I go ahead and open the public hearing?
Please.
All right, I open the public hearing. And staff, would you like to go ahead and introduce the hearing?
Yes, please. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So tonight, we have a brief public hearing for you. We've mentioned this item to you a couple times previously, and with you for the public hearing is our senior planner, Lindsay Levine.
All right. Good evening, commissioners and audience members. Tonight, I'm here to talk about zoning code amendments to codify the city's ability to adopt development agreements. This is a public hearing, so we will have the staff presentation first, and then we'll have an opportunity for members of the audience to testify, and then the Planning Commission will deliberate and give a recommendation for council. So to give some context, development agreements, or DAs, are between a jurisdiction, so the city, and a property owner, and they're a way for developers to get assurance about the applicable development standards, but they could also be used by cities to guarantee specified public benefits. The city has adopted DAs in the past. Probably the best-known examples are some of our favorite places in Kirkland, like the Village at Totem Lake and Kirkland Urban. And the city is expecting to negotiate a DA with the Seattle Kraken if council moves that proposal forward. So definitely worth noting that DAs are typically for large-scale projects, not for everyday type of stuff. And the city believes it would be useful to codify the procedures to negotiate DAs, to formalize the approval process and the expectations for DAs. So the zoning code amendments themselves consist of a new short chapter, Chapter 164, to codify those procedures around development agreements. And I want to highlight a provision that for DAs for property that's located within a quarter-mile, 405, the DA may approve uses and development standards for the property that are different than those that currently exist, aka the city's current development regulations for that specific site, and this is only for when the council approves of it, and when the council finds that the project provides more public benefits than a proposal that would strictly comply with those applicable development regulations. And with this, I really want to emphasize that it would not be granted for all DAs proposed within a quarter-mile of 405. The developer would really need to prove the purpose of the deviation and provide significant public benefits that the city council would then need to agree to and approve of. Also, as part of the code amendments, there is information about the public process for that, which includes a public hearing that would either be at city council, or they could decide that they want the Planning Commission to hold that public hearing. And then the city council is the ultimate decision-maker. They either approve or deny the development agreement, so they are not obligated by any means to approve a development agreement just because they're entering negotiations. And we have one pretty small amendment to the draft KZC since the packet was published, and that is what you see underlined up here and the one word that was stricken here. And so this is an amendment to the staff recommendation, and the purpose is to clarify that the city isn't obligated to negotiate and enter into a development agreement if the city is approached. And again, just specifying that the standards below are what the city and the developer would need to adhere to. So we just got a couple of public comments. Two of them came in via email, generally supportive. They had a couple questions. One question, the one at the very top, is the one that I'm going to talk about, because it might be of interest to the commissioners. So that question is about why the code has a provision for differing development standards for sites that could be suitable for transit-oriented development under, within a quarter-mile of 405, and not just around the future bus rapid transit stations. And that is because staff believes that there may be sites that could be suitable for transit-oriented development that are close to 405 but are outside of the immediate future BRT stations, and planning commission or council are able to amend that provision. Guys are definitely welcome to talk about that, and then motion and amendment if you would like to, if that's of interest. And again, just want to emphasize, council would only approve of a development agreement that has those differing development standards if there are public benefits that could be realized, that could not be realized if the site had the existing development standards. So, next steps. The chair will be opening up to public testimony very shortly. Planning commission will deliberate and then provide a recommendation. Once we get to that point, I have a slide that has some sample motions, so just let me know, and we will put that on the screen. And then if the planning commission has a recommendation at the end of this, this will go to council on May 6th for adoption. And that is my last slide for this part of it, so I will turn it over to Chair Rutherford.
All right, and with that, we are ready to start public testimony. The same rules here apply basically as for items from the audience, other than the topic is specifically what was just introduced. So the only name I have on the sign-in sheet at this point is Liz Hunt. So let's go ahead and come on up. If there are others online who would like to testify, then please raise your hand, and we can prepare an opportunity for you to speak. Go ahead.
Okay. Hello again, commissioners and staff. On the subject of the zoning additions to codify development agreement process for the city, I think you might mostly have seen the comments I sent in today. I just want to touch on one of them, which Lindsay's also, Ms. Levine has also mentioned just now, which is the statement in the new chapter, proposed chapter, that describes looking at 405 through Kirkland and a quarter-mile on either side of 405 through Kirkland. So that ends up being seven miles each direction, so you've got about 14 miles of property there. That's now being considered for transit-oriented development, which would have to be described and justified and many great things. But that was kind of a surprise to me to see that much space being opened up for consideration for transit-oriented development. We do need transit-oriented development. I'm not speaking against that, but we're only gonna have two BRT stations on that seven-mile stretch, and that's usually where transit-oriented development would be occurring, is around those stations. And we already have less transit in Kirkland than we should for the density we have. That's a discussion for a whole nother day. But that being the case, if we're creating some more intense development leveraging off of transit, I look forward to hearing some very creative solutions as to how we're gonna do that with the limited transit that we have. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Liz. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this topic from the public? Seeing none, I believe that marks the end of spoken testimony. And we proceed with deliberations by the commission. All right. Would anyone like to kick off deliberations? Commissioner, I think Jacobson runs the race.
I guess this is a question to staff. In reading it, there will still be a public hearing before the development agreement can be adopted. Is that correct? It's just a question of the city council can now choose whether that's before city council or the planning commission?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so there will still be public engagement once the agreement's terms are written and before actual adoption?
Absolutely. Yeah, we would probably expect that there would be a briefing as well, and not just going straight to hearing. That's typically what's done for these types of things, or usually for large projects.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Rosman?
I think the amendments make sense, and I'm happy with staff's direction on this. I think, you know, the fact that we do have public hearings and public outreach, I'm good with the way it's written.
Commissioner Reiser?
The concerns I have, and it's not that I'm against this, it is that there's a lot of area along 405 that has very little access to public transportation, and that's a concern. So I would like some wording put in that just guarantees that there is adequate access to public transit, just because I can't foresee what city council is gonna do in the future or if planning commission is bypassed because city council just decides that... I think this is a, there should be a few checks and balances in it. So I'm not against it, but I would like to wordsmith this just a little bit, saying it is a requirement that there is adequate transit.
So if I'm, I'd like to follow up on that and get clarification from staff. I believe the wording was suitable for transit-oriented development, which I think the point that Commissioner Reiser was getting to is that there's some ambiguity between that and the designated land use of transit-oriented development. Is the intention for these to be considered equal? Does that need to be clarified further, or is there some other nuances that we should be considering?
I can take that one. Thanks for the question, Chair Rutherford, and thanks for the comment, Commissioner Reiser. So the intention is not that this action is rezoning properties into transit-oriented development. It's really to identify a little bit what types of properties where the city might even be motivated to enter into negotiations for a development agreement. So it takes two parties to come to the table, so to speak. So, and we've also found in talking with the development community that that's, a development agreement typically isn't their first option, because it requires them to take on some risk as well and some uncertainty, because it is a negotiation. And so I don't think the city would be very motivated to enter into negotiations unless there was an idea that we could get some type of extraordinary public benefit through that negotiation that we wouldn't otherwise get through the standard zoning. And just to give a little bit of an idea, it really opens up a project to quite a bit of scrutiny from the city. So the last development agreement that the city negotiated, though it didn't come to fruition, was that council did adopt a development agreement for Google, excuse me, at the Lee Johnson site, and through those negotiations secured quite a bit of additional transportation network improvements around the site that we wouldn't have gotten through the city's CIP. It was specific to that negotiation and that specific project. So that was one of the public benefits that kind of went above and beyond what our code could require. And so appreciate and hear the potential desire to add language, but also just wanted to note that it is something that could be examined through that negotiation.
So this, the wording around transit-oriented development could be applied to areas that are not designated as transit-oriented development land use. Is that correct?
I think the language does suggest that there might be some areas suitable for that type of development that aren't necessary, and we don't have a transit-oriented development zone. It's a, it's a land use.
It's a land use, yes.
Right.
Yeah. All right. Commissioner Madea?
Hi, thank you. Sorry, but I need to be refreshed on the amendment that did speak to the transit piece. Can you walk us back through that again so that I can frame my question appropriately, please?
Yes, let me pull up that wording. I don't have it on a slide, but I can kind of read out...
I thought there was something on the previous slide, no?
There was a question I can, that might be a little bit helpful.
Okay.
Related to a public comment, so...
I think it was the underlying text that Commissioner Madea is referring to?
No, the may or the shall, I get that. No, it's the possible allowances. So I think I share Commissioner Reiser's concern about language, but the subsequent explanation about how it might be a better alternative to wait for the development proposal to come in, and that becomes part of the expectation or the dialogue. So I think I'm okay there, but what I want to be careful of is not kind of back-dooring or reopening the LU 2.4 through this codification of the development agreement. So that was what my concern was, just to make sure that this was a case-by-case thing when we were presented with a potential agreement versus trying to reopen LU 2.4 at this juncture. this juncture.
Staff wanted.
I can speak to that for a moment. Yeah, this is absolutely a case-by-case, with it being development agreements that a developer would need to approach the city, and we're talking about a quarter mile within 405, not all transit corridors in the city.
Well, the development, development agreements could be pursued beyond that corridor, it's just that the additional flexibility is within the areas identified specifically here.
That's correct, yes, thank you for that.
All right. Oh, Commissioner Robbins.
Yeah, my question is in regards to the greater public benefit piece of it all, and is there any scoring system or criteria? I know it's case-by-case is how we evaluate it, but is there anything that the city uses to say, you know, this, we, we have this metric to determine that this is a greater public benefit?
Thanks, Commissioner Robbins, I can take that one. There, there is not actually in the, either the state law that supports development agreements or in the language in the code. So we keep it sort of general, so that the public benefits can be negotiated on a case-by-case basis, similar to what we were talking about for the previous topic. I guess what I would say is that the comprehensive plan, which you all spent many, many hours on, provides a really good template and framework for negotiating public benefits, things like public open space, access to that, affordable housing, bike and pedestrian amenities, things like that. So I think if there was a desire to create a little more structure on the public benefits, we would work with you to look at the comprehensive plan, identify specific things that are called for in different parts of the city.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All right.
I make a motion, and then we can figure out if anyone feels they need anything added.
Sounds good, go for it.
I'm going to motion to approve the language as proposed by staff.
Second.
All right, we have a motion seconded, and this is specifically amended draft that was recommended by staff.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Technically, I believe we would need, we would, since this was not the version included in the packet, the staff amendment came after the packet, we'd ask that there's a motion by the commission to amend the, the draft code to incorporate the staff edit that we had up on the screen.
Uh-huh, that's why that will.
So you need that specifically, so then I am motion to approve.
You do retract.
Okay, I will retract the original amendment, or motion, and I motion to approve the suggested staff language, including the amended language as shown to us this evening.
Second.
Is that, does that work? Okay, great. Any further discussion on the motion? All right. Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I believe that's passed unanimously. Is there anything further for us to consider before closing the public hearing?
Nothing from staff.
Okay. Sounds great, then we here close the public hearing and move on to the next item in our agenda, which is a study session on zoning code amendments, briefing number two for the North Wanita Center zoning code. So, Staff, would you like to go ahead and introduce that?
Yes, please, thank you, Mr. Chair. So we have quite a lot of information to get through with you tonight on the two potential re-zones in the Wanita neighborhood. Leandra Baker-Lewis, our senior planner, is going to be walking you through those. This isn't a hearing, so you're not deciding anything tonight, but we are going to be asking you for quite a bit of guidance to help us complete a draft code for you to take to public hearings. So we've got a lot of questions along the way. This is a little bit different format than we've maybe worked through zoning code amendments briefings with you before, and so Leandra is going to do a great job of explaining, but please do let us know if we've lost any of you at any point, we're happy to provide clarification and some guidance along the way. So with that, I'll hand it over to Leandra.
Thanks so much, Allison, and good evening, Commission and Chair. I am happy to present on the Wanita zoning code amendment project that we've been working on with you since our initial briefing in March. While we get that pulled up, I wanted to go over a pretty packed agenda. I'll start off with some meeting objectives, just to kind of orient the group, and then we'll reflect on some community engagement to date, and some common themes of feedback that we're hearing from the community through our outreach. We'll also include a quick recap of our last meeting. I have some slides related to sections of our zoning code that we're not requesting to be amended, but I think that they add some valuable context for the commissioners as well as the audience. We'll then jump into providing just about five or so minutes for each applicant of these rezone requests to speak and kind of address the commission themselves, and then we'll really just dive into the development standards that are outlined in attachment two and three of your packet. I just wanted to also publicly apologize to the community and to the commissioners and anyone who had trouble reading those very information-rich tables. We'll be working with our admin staff to better format something along those lines in the future. But hopping from that, I'll close with, oh, then we'll go into the BC1 development standard options as well, open it up for questions and discussion, and then discuss next steps once we understand what those are. So I figured this slide would be really helpful, just to, again, orient our brains. So we heard at the last meeting some planning commission interest in streamlining the zoning amendment process, given all the work that we've done through the comprehensive plan to really understand these requests. To do that, we would need, well, tonight we'll need to establish what the planning commission preferred standards are, and how we finalize those to bring those to a public hearing. So by the end of our time together tonight, we should hopefully be able to come to a decision on a couple things, if we're ready to move to a public hearing, or if another study session is warranted. And it was also discussed at the last meeting, an idea was floated that perhaps the public hearing is an arena to bring multiple options for development standards to. Normally, we just produce one draft code for the commission and for the community to respond to and amend as they, as they'd like, but it is possible to bring a range of options for, for the public hearing, so we would just need to know which standards, if any, the commission is interested in bringing ranges to for, for the public hearing when that occurs. Oh, and then the note I added on screen is that any topics and draft codes that are taken to public hearing aren't final, the amendment process and other recommendations can be made to tailor the code before it's recommended to council. So I'm going to flash the questions before, obviously, we're not ready to answer these, but I just wanted you to know what we'll hopefully be able to answer by the end. We'll want to learn what your preferred options for development standards are for both sites. Again, we'll want to know if the commission is ready to move to a public hearing, or if another briefing would be, would be best. And then what, if any, alternate options for specific development standards should we present at the public hearing? So hopefully that, that makes sense. All right, so hopping into community engagement, we've received a good amount of input on these projects. We did a big push for the comprehensive plan, but more recently, specific to the zoning code amendments, we have presented at multiple neighborhood groups and had Q and A sessions with those, those folks. We have webpages for each study area launched with updated meeting information and announcements, and we've advertised those webpages wherever we can. We have a listserv that people can subscribe to, and that currently has, last time I checked, 92 interested community members, so we've been updating those 92 community members as the process goes on. We delivered about 2,500 postcards to nearby residents and businesses, informing them of this meeting and of the general update process. And we've also worked to contact and communicate with neighboring institutional stakeholders, mainly the schools that are near the Goodwill site. All right, so these are themes that we've heard thus far, they're, this isn't a list that is meant to be all-encompassing, but some repeated kind of themes that we've heard since the genesis of the zoning code amendment project. I won't read them all, but there, there are some community concerns, and there are some communities' support that we've noticed. So traffic and vehicular congestion is a major concern for folks, and what the implications are for a future development at these sites, on our traffic grid, infrastructure capacity, lack of traffic studies to date, so usually we'll require those for project-level review, and we've heard concern around that. Some environmental impact concerns for the JBD4 zone, and then more generally, how a perceived stall in population growth might affect our housing goals. Community support has generally focused around additional housing opportunities in the neighborhood, which is a theme that tracks from the Wanita neighborhood plan update that we conducted last year and the year before. People are excited about additional retail and shopping opportunities. We've received some support for the reduced parking minimums, as we know, the, the state bill will have an effect, or should it be passed as law, we should have, that will affect how we regulate parking citywide. So there's been support for the parking minimums suggested by the applicants. We've heard support for modest height allowances in neighborhood centers, so maybe not the full request, but additional capacity in some form of height allowance. People are rallying around the idea of more common open space and community gathering opportunities, and then specific to Goodwill, the opportunity to advance the North Wanita Neighborhood Center and get some redevelopment going up there, as well as some varied housing types. So townhomes have been expressed, or have garnered support from the, some community members as a housing type that may be suitable for this, the study area in North Wanita. And we've had a really exciting kind of recent influx of public comments, so this is mainly coming from our Wanita neighbors, our Finn Hill neighbors, and even beyond, but they've provided some additional kind of more pointed feedback that I wanted to elevate and share with you all. Some are listed here for your consideration as we go through the ranges, just for you to consider. Ones that differ a little bit from the themes we just went over are that the zoning changes should, or the commission should, rather, should be thoughtful and kind of transparent, or very transparent about their decisions, and explain their choices as we move through this process. We've heard pointed kind of specific feedback about where the park-to-park connection could be, as, as we've heard this evening from the public, there are opportunities outside of the intersection to make that a reality, and so we've heard support for exploring that. The North Wanita site could be a really cool place for public gathering, as we've noted, but we also received feedback that since it's close to schools, it should be a child-friendly or teen-friendly gathering opportunity for them as well. A lot of places are not as teen-friendly, so you either have to, you know, spend money or, or otherwise buy something to be there, so this would be a cool opportunity, some have expressed for, for something like that. Another comment mentioned that we should also explore, like, ecological public benefits outside of our high-performing building standards, which really regulate how efficient a building is. I think that the comments that we've received regarding public benefits also explore more site-wide sustainable efforts, such as green infrastructure, rooftop gardens, additional green space with native vegetation, things like that. So later in the presentation, although it wasn't highlighted in your packet, we can obviously have that discussion as well when we talk about public benefits. And then we've also heard that the sites should provide accessible, affordable housing, and varied housing types, again, in Wanita were supported. At your last meeting, the commission had questions and kind of varying feedback on topics like public access and pedestrian connections. You were interested in seeing how people would maybe move through the site and access the site through all modes of transportation. We also heard that massing and visual impacts are kind of unknown at this point, so they would like, or the commission, some commissioners were asking to see massing, which we can go through, and then vehicular traffic impacts and parking requirements were elevated as a, as a place where we really need to kind of dig in a little further. All right, so these are the next few slides that cover some code that applies citywide to all development currently. I'm not, our staff isn't requesting any amendments, and this is more for informational, to address both the planning commission unknowns that we just went over, as well as some community concerns. So starting with the chapter 105 of the Kirkland zoning code, this chapter regulates pedestrian access through a site and within a site, and requires that our pedestrian movements be facilitated and supported in the areas listed on the screen for the project. So we have to provide pedestrian walkways to connect through parking areas, from buildings to sidewalks, and to our transit facilities, between uses on the subject property, these are all required and for all development. We typically don't use the zoning code to regulate access and where access happens, and this is specific, a little bit more specific to the Michael site. So we don't use the zoning code to regulate where access occurs, as in like where vehicles should enter, or queue, or leave the site. That information is better decided after the project rece, or the applicants for the development project would submit a traffic impact analysis and other documentation through the development review process, and that helps our public works department best regulate access on a site-specific level, as opposed to a zone-specific level. So that's why you won't see a lot of staff recommendations, or many, any, for how people access the site vehiculally. Just wanted to elevate that. And then another note is that overhead weather protection on building facades is also regulated through this chapter, and in our design districts, which both of these will become, they, the range is 75 to 100% of the building facade must be covered, as a, as a kind of way to enhance pedestrian access. Right, moving into our attempt to address the traffic concerns at a high level, I didn't, I don't intend on this being a concurrency conversation, but it was a big portion of your packet, and it does impact the way that the project is received, so we wanted to just go over what concurrency is on a high level. So we've heard a lot from the community regarding vehicular traffic and congestion near both sites, and this has been the case even since the comprehensive plan phase of the requests. As a reminder, these requests were factored into the growth modeling conducted for the 2044 comprehensive plan, and for the recent update to our transportation strategic plan. So they were studied for their environmental impacts through the SEIS that accompanied the comprehensive plan, and this also means that we're planning for these increases in density, and have accounted for them in our impacts to our roads, sewer, and water infrastructure to ensure that we don't overload those systems and that infrastructure. Because the TSP analysis identified that with no action, the intersection serving the sites would fall below the accepted levels of service, acceptable levels of service, the TSP identifies projects, they're proposed and funded through our, our six-year CIP or capital improvement program, and those projects are, address the intersections that serve both sites. It should be noted that the projects are subject to change, so what's been identified as what could So, what's been identified as what could help with the degradation of levels of service, those projects are analyzed annually, is my understanding. And we ensure that when the time comes, the appropriate action to bring our levels of service back up at the intersections are taken. And just a little bit more generally, the TSP, the Transportation Strategic Plan, it prioritizes pedestrians, bicyclists, transit, and motor vehicles in that order. The TSP calls for moves towards sustainability and equity. And the priority is given to projects serving to connect activity hubs and neighborhood centers. The priorities for the TSP, such as bicycle and pedestrian movement, equity and sustainability, these are reflected through our multimodal levels of service. So, we assess our transportation grid performance based on all levels of, or all types of transportation, not just vehicular movement. So, that is something to note as well. Another major step in development, just for background, this is our traffic considerations that are made during development review. The developer, ultimately, this slide is just describing that any developer doing a project of this size would need to supply a transportation impact analysis, a TIA. The TIA is where we really expect to learn of the anticipated impacts of the added traffic and explore mitigation measures and the timeframe for that implementation that needs to occur. So, the TIA also takes into account current traffic volumes, at peak hours, crash data, and other components to really inform what improvements or mitigation steps are necessary. And those must be in place or addressed prior to building occupancy. All that to say, we use the TIA very strategically. And we have a really great, smart group of transportation engineers and planners who administer these checks and balances. And the process has been this way since our adopted levels of service changed in 2015. If the planning commission is interested, I also wanted to offer, we can maybe see about getting our transportation staff to provide the group with an overview or a refresher kind of course on these really complex topics. They're not something that the planning department administers, but we're open to providing you with that contextual knowledge. I think the last time they came was the comp plan. So, it's been a little minute, so let us know if you're interested in that. With that, I will turn it over to our applicants, AKA the property owners for both study areas. We'll start with the Michael's site, also known as the JBD4 zoning code amendment project. We have the property owner here, Carl Peterson, as well as his representatives as well. So, we'll let him speak if that's okay. Thanks.
Hello, my name is Carl Peterson and I own the property that is currently leased to Michael's. I would like to thank you for your support during the last year of J16 and also in your upcoming support to implement this policy, which supports housing opportunities. Michael's property, located at the gateway to Wanita Village, is outdated, ugly, and poorly maintained by a tenant that caters mostly to clients who come from outside of Kirkland. Additionally, it has a narrow sidewalk that does not conform to current codes. Residents and city planners are calling for better pedestrian experience linking Wanita Bay Park to Wanita Beach Park. And our team continues to work together with residents and city staff to meet these goals. A few years ago, I was here asking for an amendment to increase the height to four stories with the citizen's amendment request. I completed Phase 1. Before Phase 2 began, I learned of a wetland zoning change, which restricts building on a lot of the property. And it was no longer economically viable to pursue that. So, I withdrew my citizen's amendment request at that time. So, now I'm here, I'm asking for seven stories. Is that what would be necessary for this property to be developed? If we don't get this, what we've been talking about here, I've got another three and a half years left on the lease and then I'd be looking to sign a 20-year lease with a 20-year extension. So, any properties that, any problems that plague this property and possible solutions would be kind of no longer up for discussion. So, I really look forward to working with everybody on this. I believe that Kirkland is running out of opportunities to develop land, especially in an urban village. And needs for housing are only going to increase in the future. Additionally, redeveloping and adopting current code will improve the environmental impact of this property. So, environmental concerns should be addressed. I believe there's an outstanding opportunity here to realize a win for Kirkland in providing increased housing, improving pedestrian experience, and changing the gateway of Wanita from a dilapidated old building into a vibrant development that meets many more needs of the people of Kirkland. Residents living at this location would enjoy the benefits of Wanita Bay and Wanita Beach Parks, as well as nearby mass transit and the amenities of Wanita Village. I'd like to please introduce our land use attorney, Jessica Rowe, to follow up with some of these ideas, please.
Yes, go ahead, Jessica.
Thank you, Carl. Can I actually suggest, and I apologize, I forgot to coordinate this with Carl. Can I suggest our transportation engineer, Jeff Shram, comment and then I'll finish? If Jeff's there.
Sounds good, he's stepping up, yes.
Yes, good evening. My name is Jeff Shram. I'm a traffic engineer, transportation professional. I have 30 years of experience in this field. Our company, 10W, actually has an office here in Kirkland, just up above Kirkland Urban. And I've been in front of this commission before on this particular site and this property. And really, what staff presented to you earlier was, what I do as a professional and what my company does is do the TIA, the traffic study. In this case, because of the public comments and concerns about traffic access and in order to help inform the commissioners, Carl, Mr. Peterson hired our company to help try to provide some transportation information early, which I think is absolutely helpful. So, I'm mostly here to answer questions if you have. There's a lot of information that's been provided. But I would like to highlight a couple of things based on some of the public testimony I heard at other commission meetings, even heard tonight, and maybe even answer some of the questions you might have. Just want to hit on a couple of topics. One is access. The site today has two access points. One is, as you may or may not know, there's a drive, there's two driveways. One is very close to the intersection. And it's very limited in terms of the ability to get cars in and out. But what's important is there's an easement with the adjacent property, the widener property that allows cross-easement and shared parking as well. That becomes critical because a site like this, with, you know, multifamily uses and many, you know, units, would require better access. And so, that, our expectation is that with the property and with the redevelopment, with the rezone, the site would benefit from and continue to have that shared access. And that other driveway is shared onto Wanita Drive. That provides full turning movements, you know, in all directions. That becomes critical. Second thing I'd like to mention is, we hear a lot about traffic congestion. I'm not here really to talk about concurrency, but what's important and known and very relevant to the site is, you know, we've done some preliminary analysis or numbers. And as a transportation professional, I just want to share a little bit, not get into too many details, but big picture. Something on the order of about 170 units, which would fit within this rezone, would generate a fair amount of traffic. But what's important to note is, how does that compare to the traffic that's generated today by the Michael's store? It's not a vacant site, right? We're not just, residents aren't just going to generate new trips to a system that does have some congestion levels at peak times. There's no doubt. That intersection carries a significant amount of traffic during peak hours in particular. But what's interesting is that the Michael's site, as a retail use, would, actually currently generates more traffic per day than the 170 units would at its full build-out. And that's based on hundreds of traffic studies of other similar uses. Again, I can get into details if we need to. During the PM peak hour, which is, you know, the hour we talk about that has the most congestion, the site would generate fewer trips than the Michael's store currently does. It's not this case for the AM peak hour because the Michael's store, I believe, opens at 9:00. So, the site would generate more traffic during the morning peak hour. So, I just want to make sure I establish that distinction. And wasn't intending to talk a lot about parking, but I can if there are questions. But the last thing I wanted to highlight is the improvements that would be anticipated. Sometimes we call them frontage improvements, but the enhancements that would happen at that corner. Right now, we know that that corner is, I'll just, for lack of an engineering term, we'll just call it tight. The sidewalk is really minimal. The, you know, the crosswalk and the curb ramp really eat into the sidewalk. The signal poles, the poles that carry all the signal equipment are right in the middle of the sidewalk. And so, it makes the pedestrian experience really not ideal. And so, with the amount of pedestrian traffic that occurs there today at the park and is going to continue to grow and as this development occurs, we would expect that that corner gets built out to a better standard. Not only to meet the city's minimum standard, but to really enhance the pedestrian experience. Not only is the sidewalk narrow, there's a fence because there's a little bit of a grade drop between the sidewalk and the property. It just makes it feel very tight and not a lot of room for the type of kind of open pedestrian experience we want to see. So, the project as it would develop, and again, this is stuff that we would do as part of a traffic study, but I can tell you now, knowing that we've done many of these, the sidewalk can be improved. I would expect as part of the city's capital project, eventually, as we heard from concurrency, that intersection is going to get modified and widened. Those signal poles would be set back to a place where they get out of the sidewalk. So, really what the project would do is probably work with staff to determine the best way to make that pedestrian experience, where those poles need to occur, how wide the sidewalk is, and just make that a, just a more enhanced pedestrian experience. So, really, those were the key things I wanted to mention. Jessica, before you speak, should I make myself available to staff questions now or?
That's up to Leandra and commissioners if they have a preference there.
Sure, this sounds good to me. Commissioner Rosman?
I'm curious about the peak PM trips. You said it's less. What are we talking about as far as like what's current and what would be expected?
I did bring some notes to make sure, right now, the, let's see here. Right now, the Michael's store during the, you're mostly worried or concerned about the PM peak hour, right? The Michael's store.
Yeah, because that's really.
Yeah, generates approximately a little over 100 trips an hour during the PM peak hour. And the, again, we looked at this at 170 units. Would generate about 70. So, it's less than, not significantly less than, but it would be less than.
I mean, 30% less.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. What, yeah, that was the question. Thank you.
Following on on that, I was wondering, let's see. Oh, yeah, how does the mix between, like, the presence of retail? How does that within the site? Have you studied how that affects the PM peak?
Good question, yeah. I haven't studied in a lot of detail. Again, I'm just trying to provide big picture. But what I can tell you in general is that retail trips tend to be a little bit shorter because they serve, you know, a closer area. Again, I'm speaking very generally when it comes to a retail use. Whereas residential trips tend to have longer, what we call origins and destinations. In this particular case, and as part of the detailed traffic study we would do, we'd probably study that a little bit more because the Michael's use, I would say is, you know, it's definitely a retail use, but it's not necessarily a local draw, although there's certainly some local trips. But tends to draw from a little bit larger area. So, yeah. And the trip-making characteristics are a little bit different.
Okay. And what is the assumption for the amount of retail space that's used so far in your calculations or is there any assumed?
There is no retail space assumed.
Okay. Any further questions from the commission? Commissioner Reiser?
In the no retail space assumed, are you asking for no retail to be put in the basement of the?
Yeah. I'm going to, I'll defer that to whether Jessica wants to handle that or Mr. Peterson.
No, we weren't. Commissioner, thanks for the question. And I'm happy to have, I guess, when we were speaking with Jeff planning his study, we're focused on the multifamily, but that was not meant to imply that we're requesting no retail. So, I'm happy to work with Jeff to have some updated information, if that's helpful, addressing some amount of retail. But we don't have a specific amount of retail in mind yet. And so, we're trying to strike the balance between studying, over-studying too early for things.
Yeah, and when we say retail, I think what we're really getting at is any sort of like publicly useful, active uses in the ground floor. And, you know, if there are ways in which the commission should consider what we should be allowing, what we should be preparing to accommodate, then, you know, please, you know, I think that'd be really interesting to hear from the applicant. I know that's beyond Jeff's lane, but.
Understood, yeah. We've been hearing the desire for ground floor commercial and I think that's understood, that some amount is desired by the commission. And we're not asking that that not be the case by any means. But we can, Jeff, you and I can circle up with Carl and provide some additional information on that piece.
Oh, does this follow?
Yeah, I just think that that should be part of the traffic study too. If there is, even if it's public space, if it is retail space, that should be included in the traffic study.
Yeah, and from what I understand, that would be included in a future, in a subsequent traffic study as part of the concurrency planning and the TIA.
That's correct. We would do it in more detail. What I am willing to do, a little bit off-script here, Jessica, is I mean, I knew this was a question. I mean, you know, and so what I would say is, without limiting ourselves to a certain amount of retail, I can tell you the numbers that I just shared a few minutes ago with the PM peak hour. I mean, even a retail use on a ground floor that maybe plus or minus 5,000 square feet still wouldn't generate the level of traffic that would exceed, you know, with 170 units about what the current Michael's does. So, plus or minus. And again, even if that number of trips was slightly over, again, this is, it doesn't mean that the traffic system can't handle it. It just means that we're talking about relatively a wash or a net sum difference that's probably negligible.
Any further questions from commissioners?
I noticed you referenced 170 units. I seem to believe previously, the number of units we were looking at for the site was larger. Is 170 what you'd be seeking there or is that just used for the traffic modeling?
I can answer part of that. And Jessica, feel free to chime in if you'd like. But the studies that were done for the comprehensive plan involved both parcels of the JBD4 zone. So, we plugged in about 300 units across the zone for our purposes of our growth modeling. We anticipate, and the applicant's request includes about 170 units approximately for their requested density.
And are there any further questions? And I, if, are there any further questions from the commission? I had one more. This builds on the, the statement from Commissioner Rosman at the start of tonight's meeting with the state limitations on parking requirements by cities. I don't know if your team has yet discussed how that might influence the amount of parking that you include and how that in turn might affect the projected trips to and from the site.
Yeah. I'm willing to share a couple pieces on that based on my experience. So traffic and parking are certainly relatable items. And the, the traffic generation numbers that we're using are based on an urban use as opposed to something that's a little bit more suburban. So it accounts for services in the area, transit, things like that. Same for parking. What I would say, how this site relates to the legislative bill that's, you know, could be adopted, that reduces to point five. This site would be a great candidate site for that. Right now, the city's code isn't for parking, doesn't really embrace, in my opinion, what would be necessary for a site like this with, which has sort of limited ability to go into the ground for parking. But also this site is close to services, parks, transit service. It qualifies for what the city defines and the state law defines as a frequent transit corridor. So those are the types of things that I think a site like this would be a reasonable candidate for a parking reduction.
Commissioner Rosman?
I just want to be clear, that bill is on the governor's desk, just-
Correct. I'm not suggesting it will be or has been passed, but just that I, my understanding is it's been, again, or endorsed by both the senate and the-
Right, yeah. So I, well, I guess we can't say it's officially law at this point, you know. It's, I would say it's pretty confident that, you know, now that it's at the governor's desk, I think we can talk in terms of what that means for this site, I think, at this point.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Jeff. Anything else?
No, I'll, I mean, I, I just wanted to offer that I'll be here. I'm not sure if whatever Jessica wants to share, if it stirs up other questions, I'm, I'll just be right here. Thank you.
Sounds great. Yeah, Jessica, anything else you'd like to add?
Thank you, yeah. I'll be brief and really, we, a lot of the questions we heard last time were focused around parking and access. So we wanted to make sure Jeff was available for questions and address those issues. The only other comment I'll make, we apologize, our architect for the site couldn't be available tonight. But she, I did want to just reiterate, the main thing she and land use attorneys wish we could speak like architects about design and massing, but it's not going to be quite the same. But she did evaluate the site diligently, as Carl talked about, in terms of feasibility. And the reason why we were asking for 70, you know, seven stories is because the lower heights just weren't going to facilitate redevelopment for housing. So we just wanted to reiterate that one more time. I know it's been heard by the commissioners. But it isn't, it's a critical issue for this site. We know we're going to have to do new site improvements, new stormwater. The street improvements that Jeff was talking about are going to be hopefully fantastic addition to the area. But those are complicated. It's going to involve utilities and things we don't even know about yet that civil engineers need to look at, not, not me, the land use attorney. Lot of unknowns there and, but a lot of possibility, but it is why we are going for the seven stories. If there, I don't believe there are more questions about it, but we wanted to reiterate that being an important point. And beyond that, I just want to say higher level, really appreciate again all the time. And this is a, Leandra, I appreciated your complex table, being really diligent, thinking through the options. But one theme, you know, that I would offer for you, just a thought for you all commissioners, is that this is one little site. It's pretty constrained in the city of Kirkland. It may not be able to achieve all of the policy planning goals that we have as the city of Kirkland. We think it can achieve housing. We think it can offer some affordable housing. We think it can do pedestrian, great pedestrian improvements, but it may not be able to do all of the things on the menu of the list. So just maintaining some flexibility to make sure the housing comes to fruition is what the theme that I'm thinking about and would offer for you all to think about. So, you know, the, the pedestrian connection, I'd like to put a pin on that and provide, get more information about where that would be and be able to provide some feedback on that. And the green building requirements to those, we do have the most stringent, or one of the most stringent energy codes now and building codes in the country here. So I would offer that that may be an added cost that could hinder housing development here. So just want to be careful and make sure we achieve the goal of housing. If, and that's the goal I've been hearing from commissioners and council members on this. But also willing to keep discussing what things mean for, for the site. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Leandra, would you like to proceed?
Yeah, thank you. I'll introduce our next property owner speakers, the Balboa Retail Partners. We have Allison Warner on behalf of Balboa, who I believe is available for screen share as well, if you'd like. Go ahead, Allison. Thank you.
Thank you, Leandra. Good evening, Chair Rutherford, former Chair Reiser and all the other commissioners. Appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight. And if you give me just a second, I have a presentation to share if I can just be sure to pick the right screen here. Can you guys see the-
Yes.
Beautiful aerial of, of Wantina Goodwill. So my name is Allison Warner. I'm Senior Vice President of Development and Redevelopment at Balboa Retail Partners. And I'm sure I've introduced this many times before, but at Balboa, we invest, own and operate retail shopping centers, mostly grocery and grid retail shopping centers. And that's our business plan first and foremost. However, as we all understand the changing dynamics of retail as our retailers are going omni-channel and having more of online presences or delivery services, they aren't losing or completely eliminating their physical footprints in their brick and mortar locations, but their size requirements and their space requirements are certainly changing. And so what we run into a lot is buying a 40,000 square foot former grocery store box that is largely obsolete for even today's grocery stores. I look a lot at demising retail space and upgrading facades and so on and so forth. And what, what my primary job has actually turned into, even after, you know, many, many years of focusing on retail development, I have become pretty well-versed in converting commercial shopping centers into alternate uses. Commercial shopping center is very different than office buildings and residential buildings. The lease terms are different. They're across the board for different types of uses. As Mr. Peterson said earlier, his Michael's lease, you know, if he renews that, he's locking his site up for another 20-plus years before having any potential for redevelopment. You know, banks and restaurants and so forth, they want five to 10 years with options to have certainty in investing their own money and building out their space internally. And also those leases don't typically align and term out in alignment with each other. And so unlocking commercial retail space is actually pretty challenging. And when you have opportunities like the Wantina Goodwill site and the Michael's site presented, you know, presenting near-term opportunities to redevelop them into something better for the community, it's a really unique opportunity and something not to be missed. So specific to Goodwill, here's how we look at it. It really is anchoring this larger commercial zone in the North Wantina area at the corner of 100th and 132nd. Goodwill has about three years left of term on its lease. U S Bank recently, not recently, U S Bank also has the same amount of term. I believe they expire about the same time as the Goodwill. And the corner location is currently vacant, although I'm sure many of the residents buy their Christmas trees there and, and other holiday specialties across the site. But what we see as an opportunity is really to anchor this corner as a gateway to North Wantina and further strengthen this existing commercial corridor along the site. So a lot of the way that we approach mixed use and residential development is, is from the retail on the ground up. We want to make sure that we continue to have successful retail and that if we're going to convert from existing retail to mixed use, that it's leasable retail. And there's a lot of sort of nuances in design that go into that, that a lot of mixed use developers don't fully understand. So even if we're only talking about 5,000 to 10,000 square feet of ground floor retail, there's some key points that need to be thought about for the overall project that help bolster the success of the retail on the ground floor. So with that, I'll take, walk you through a little bit, not in too much detail, as I submitted a letter that kind of walks through everything in detail. But our approach to looking at this site is very conceptual at this point. We've worked with a couple of different architects. We've brought Jeremy Ecker on board as our land use attorney. We've engaged transfo, which isn't typical to engage a transfer, a transportation engineer this early in the project, but we understand it's such a focus, we wanted to make sure that he got a good look at this from early on and understanding how it might fit into the city's planning and so on. And, and analyzing sort of the options of projects that, that you see here. We've looked at this from a maximum capacity, which is Scheme One, which is about 600 units over 10,000 to 12,000 square feet of retail. We recognize there are challenges all around in that design. There are challenges in the cost of construction in today's world. So Scheme Two is looking at what's called wrap. It's a less expensive option for a parking garage. However, you can see it kind of takes up quite a bit of site area, but that project still achieves almost 500 units. It's at about 480 units, so it's still creating significant housing opportunity and it's over about 11,000 square feet of retail. And then we sort of looked at the other end and said, hey, what if this was a mix of housing uses? You know, J 20 really does policy J 20, says that it's looking for housing variety. And as Leandra pointed out, the community is interested in housing variety. And so what if we layered in townhomes, which is not a current allowable use with multifamily? And that project achieves about, so about 250 apartment units and about 70 townhomes. And it also has pros and cons and challenges. But we took each one of these forms and massing and programs and sort of applied all the various design guidelines and development regulations to see how they might work to achieve each and each one of these options. Starting with the allowability of stacked and attached. Like I said, the first project, it, it is pretty significant construction costs in today's market. You know, I'm sure everyone knows that, that capital markets changed a couple of years ago, making financing construction projects pretty difficult for the past two years or so. And in today's world, we all know how much uncertainty doesn't help projects moving forward. We, we don't know what tariffs will or won't impact these projects and so on and so forth. And so we landed on Scheme Three as sort of this way to say, well, what if it was a smaller vertical mixed use project that still allowed for strong density, a strong corner at 100th and 132nd, but the for sale component of the project, which is significantly less construction costs? And, and in today's market, more financeable, actually helps kind of finance and justify the vertical construction, which then allows for achieving the affordable housing goals and the building standards that, you know, are, are often challenges to figure out how to make a project feasible when you're trying to meet, you know, such high standards. So that kind of explains the background of why we look at all, looked at all three programs. Moving to the ground floor active use, you know, I just quickly denote today's zoning would require 47,000 square feet of retail. And quite frankly, you, you would just leave the project the way it is, if that's the case. It'd be very challenging to lease 47,000 square feet of retail as part of a mixed use project, especially at this location. What makes retail successful is visibility, signage and parking. And that can be critical to the success of, of a tenant. Customers are looking for convenient access points and convenient experiences when they go to a retail project. Also, as I touched on before, being on 100th corridor of existing retail, really anchoring that corridor at the intersection of 132nd, we're recommending that any sort of retail requirement be focused on 100th Avenue. Let the market drive and determine whether or not it wants to extend further down, sorry, yeah. If it wants to extend further down 132nd Street. But at least 60% of the frontage length should be in active commercial use. We're recommending that you actually require a minimum floor height of 15 feet and a minimum depth of retail of 25 feet, as that just allows for a more approachable environment for the customer, a more comfortable environment for the customer. And we do feel that residential lobbies are important to the residential projects to have visibility as well and that many residential ancillary uses can be activating in a pedestrian street environment. So, you know, allow for some flexibility for that to maybe count as an active ground floor use. Along the lines of the ground floor height for commercial space being 15 feet, this really drives the need for the 75 feet to achieve the densities that we're talking about here. If you were to reduce it to 70 feet, for example, you know, you would actually lose an entire floor of residential or reduce it down to 60 and you're losing up to two floors of residential at certain points across the site. So 15 feet ground floor plus, you know, five to six floors of residential above, you know, allows for that ground floor active use, the residential densities that you're achieving. And just starts to kind of meet in the middle of all the goals that everyone's looking to achieve here. From a perceived height bulk and scale mitigation, my letter kind of outlines different ways to achieve that. But one of the things that, that we've kind of noted is, is a good way to approach this is sky exposure planes from existing property lines adjacent to single-family homes. It's a really good way to ensure that the, the impact to the adjacent single-family homes is mitigated and allows for plenty of sunlight and sky exposure into their properties. The pedestrian oriented facade, we think can be achieved both with the ground floor active use on 100th, but on 132nd. Residential can be designed with really great front stoops and weather protection at the entrances. And we're fully in support of ample sidewalks and furnishing zones and landscaping buffers as that, you know, makes the pedestrian feel comfortable and safe. It makes the environment feel approachable. Retailers really appreciate that, that space in that area in front of their store for cafes to spill out and so forth. And, you know, of course, we welcome the design review process to ensure that all these design guidelines are appropriately met, no matter which residential use or type of project is ultimately feasible. You know, when the market comes, time to build that project. In regards to the transportation and parking, the only thing we, we would really say is that putting a maximum number on parking limits would really be detrimental to the, to the retail, as I mentioned. You know, we want to make this feel accessible and comfortable for pedestrians and cyclists and people arriving by vehicle alike and want to reduce the amount of friction that our customers experience. And so the bullet points that you see here listed for retail, restaurant and residential use are what we expect the market to want to incorporate into this project and understands that minimums might be less, but, you know, would ask that you don't impose any maximum parking requirements at this project. Moving on, just a little bit more detail of each scheme. We know that you had requested kind of massing and views to really understand what we're talking about. This is the maximum 600 apartment conceptual project that includes about 11,000 square feet of retail on the ground floor all along 100th here with some residential lobby use, some good outdoor kind of parklit space being planned along the commercial frontages, easily accessible parking that's, you know, quote unquote, at grade with the street access points. Good open space internally for the residents. And then you can see it kind of steps down, both in the massing picture here and in the section below. There's this red line that represents what our proposed sky exposure plane at 45 degrees would represent. would represent. It would require a project to um adjust its horizontal location or step down a level of units um in response to the single family residential being here. And you can see that, you know, this project is um barely taller than the existing homes due to the existing grade differential between the two project sites. Here's the example of the wrap. I think this image is a really good one that shows how it could be a good, strong anchor for this corner. Retail on the ground floor, um again, same massing from the single family homes behind. And then here's the townhome incorporated into the two hundred and fifty units. You can still see commercial on the ground floor along one hundredth. Um, you know, street trees and landscaping incorporated into the pedestrian um oriented sidewalks. And, you know, the townhomes being placed adjacent to the single family homes is respectful to that use next door. And then lastly, I'll just touch on, you know, what I mentioned earlier is we did have transpo groups submit a letter addressing um the the concerns around, you know, the increased traffic. And the only thing I really wanted to know on is in his conclusion, you know, where not only did he review the T S P and talk about the analyses that will be required of the formal project when that's submitted. But, you know, he also said that given the large amount of commercial space allowed to be constructed under the current zoning and the proposed change in zoning was result, the trip generation associated with the proposed change in zoning. Um, at the maximum project, six hundred units would be a nominal increase in the trip generation compared to what would be developed under today's zoning standards. Um, so we'll go into detail there. We have very conceptual projects, a lot more detailed studies to come. But I just wanted to touch on that, that we have started taking a look at it and we are responding to the concerns and making sure that, you know, the project um will go through all the studies and um processes as required. I will leave it there with any questions. Jeremy um Eckert, Orlando's attorney is also on the line if there's anything more technical. Um, but thank you for allowing me to present and thank you again to Leandra Allison and staff. You guys have been great to work with and um your table of the zoning options was actually really organized and helpful as we work through this project.
Great, yeah. Um, should we uh go around for a quick round of questions from commissioners? Anyone like to speak up?
I I just have to compliment you on a great presentation. It it did make things a lot clearer. The question I have is, okay, so we have these three options that were kind of put in front of us. And I I kind of, for staff, where do you want us to go from here? Are you looking at, uh, do you want us to go for the highest amount and then let them scale back as needed? What do you, I'm looking for guidance here because I liked all three of their options that they gave us. Uh, I liked the fact that they had retail. I'm hoping that retail isn't uh included in all of these because not only does it serve Kirkland, but it serves the people who are going to be living there. And that's more of my concern is that retail kind of facilitates the residents, so they're not getting in their car and making a trip. So that is what I'm asking.
Yeah, I can I can take that one, Chair Ricer, and um I think related to both of the presentations that you just saw, we we wanted to give you an opportunity to learn a little bit more specifically about how the development community or the property owners to the site might look at them. So, but we're, we want to make it clear that we're not approving any of these proposals tonight. What we really want you to focus on is what's appropriate zoning for the site? How much flexibility do you want there to be in the zoning moving forward for each site? Um, because I think especially um with the options that you just saw, w- we don't know exactly what the market is going to be like when the property is ready to move forward with redevelopment. And so I think the thing for planning commission to consider is what do you want the potential options to be available? Or what options do you want to be available to the development community in the future at the site? And then guide us towards crafting a zoning code that would accommodate that. So we feel we have some staff recommendations for you that Leandra is going to be walking through. We've focused those on the capacity that we studied for each site. Um, but part of our conversation tonight is if you want to see anything metered down.
Any further questions from the question? I I have a a couple, um, a few maybe. Um, so one of the things that I've noticed looking at the site is there are some significant visual opportunities in the approach from Wouldn- from uh Wanita Woodville away. Um, that corner seems like it's going to be very prominent. And so far, I I haven't seen anything. It it doesn't look like there's been really significant thought around how uh how that might be, ha- build a visual gravity to it that would become, you know, it has a potential to become a real visual icon for the identifier for the the neighborhood. And I'm wondering if there are any, and maybe you aren't ready to um, maybe you haven't thought about this yet, but I'd like to be thinking about, are there any special accommodations that we should be considering to enable you to really ma- make that corner snap and be a a visual icon for the um neighborhood? Um, I don't know if you have anything off the top of your head to say about that, or just want to take that nugget and walk with it?
Um, I I will certainly certainly think about that. I can't think of anything off the top of my head. Um, other than I think kind of those ground floor heights that that we talked about allow for the pedestrian level to to have some some substance to it and some u- unique design and architectural um components, rather than a lot of times retail just get squished down on the bottom of a bunch of residential and it's not the best experience. Um, and then the other thing is I would sort of say that all three of the options that we looked at were to see if the zoning works for all three of those options and allows for any one of those to go forward. And we feel confident that with the recommendations we've made and a lot of staff's recommendations that that can happen. And the ground floor active use on one hundredth is another way to really anchor, you know, the the one hundredth avenue corridor um and get some gravitas that way.
Yeah, yeah. I I agree that uh quite often it's the the pedestrian level that really needs the attention. But in this case, I I think that there's, you know, it it's such a visual opportunity beyond the the ground floor level. This is one of the cases where I'm like, this kind of really is a an interesting opportunity. Um, second is, uh, I'm glad to see it looks like you're including uh plans for the uh east-west street uh at the north side of the of the project. I was wondering if there is thought to any other through block connections, either walk, bike and or potentially even uh like a an alleyway that's pedestrian oriented, but perhaps um provide some vehicular access. I'm a big fan of uh interfering a fine grain street grid and the value of uh of smaller blocks. And I sort of if that's something that you're exploring or if that would throw a wrench into uh your concepts.
Couple thoughts in response to that. One, it, you know, through block connections for vehicles um would make it more challenging to achieve, you know, the density in the multifamily. Um, only options, you know, as you could see in the townhome options, there's a few more. Um, there there's clearly, there's more driveways. Other than that, it's challenging to think about adding additional circulation to give someone a path to nowhere essentially, because in the east-west direction, it dead ends into the fence at the fire station. And in the north-south direction, it dead ends into, you know, a fifteen foot sloped rock retaining wall. Um, and again, for the the retail component, you actually kind of want your pedestrians to be out on one hundredth and interacting with the ground floor active uses. And so we actually think the focus should be on how to improve one hundredth and one thirty second to um facilitate that being the most comfortable and the most convenient access points for for pedestrians and cyclists.
Alright. Commissioner Rosman?
Could you give us a sense of what the square footage for the retail is for the three different options? Because I think that's of interest, because I think the first option probably has a lot more square footage for retail than the like the second and third.
All three actually have about the same. Um, the first option's at eleven thousand, the wrap option was at about ten thousand, and the third was at twelve thousand and five hundred. Um, again, I I didn't, sorry, I didn't go into too much detail on this. But rather than prescribing like just a percentage of the overall development square footage or a percentage of the site square footage, um, that's a little bit arbitrary for retail and the market can't always respond to that. So what we're recommending is when the project is designed, we believe that at least sixty percent of the project frontage on one hundredth avenue should be ground floor active uses. And then with the minimum depths of twenty five feet, which um is in alignment with the apartments above. So it makes really efficient construction. Um, apartment depths are typically thirty to thirty-five feet in width um for a a single row of units in a corridor. Um, and so your retail will typically align with that below um on the ground floor. It makes for efficient construction. And that then makes for good commercial space along the frontage where you want it. If you start applying additional square footages, you get a lot deeper commercial space that's too dark or not leasable. And also, um, just to kind of touch on the applicant's um analysis earlier, retail does drive more traffic than residential uses. Um, and so that balance of parking versus use um is always a consideration.
Alright, thanks. Um, yeah, I've I've also noticed uh there's in other areas, like in uh in Seattle, I've seen some very shallow retail frontages that work really well. Uh, like uh the convention center, they they have a couple of like, it's just a service window. And, you know, it's a very active frontage, but uh very little depth. So I think there's a lot of uh opportunity for for smaller scale uh active uses. Um, I'll let Commissioner Medea go ahead and then I had a couple other points after that.
Well, if you're on a roll, I don't want to ruin you.
Uh, I mean, you have something on your mind, so go ahead and speak up.
Okay, thank you. Um, thank you for presenting the options. That's super helpful. Um, and I did appreciate as well the your um expertise and opinion on um points to consider to ensure uh viability of a project site, so the visibility, the signage and the parking. Um, question for staff, um because to her point, and we understand this, you know, the market being what it is, it's hard to sort of predict what might be the best option going forward. Um, so even though we're not making decisions tonight, we are providing you recommendations on um zoning uh changes. I- is there an opportunity to um ensure flexibility in that recommendation so that any one of those three options in the future could be chosen based on um developer preference and what's happening in the market at that time?
Yeah, thanks um for the question, Commissioner Medea. Um, y- yes, so like I said, I think that the staff recommendations and the options in front of you could accommodate up to the maximum amount requested. Um, and if you don't do things like put um caps or minimums, then it leaves the zoning code flexible in the future for multiple concepts to be explored. Um, because there could be other concepts, right? We don't have any construction permits submitted. There could be other concepts presented in the future.
Alright. Uh, another question about the courtyard spaces. What uh what do you see as the benefit? Are those intended to be publicly accessible? Or would they be activated in some way? Or that is that going to be like fenced off and only for uh intended for private use? And, you know, I'm thinking about, these are things that we would probably want to consider. How do we approach this in the zoning code in terms of like what sort of frontage requirements or allowances there are?
Yeah, great question. Um, what's available and accessible to the public versus private for the residents is again a a balance that you want to strike, um, you know, to be a benefit for all parties. And it really depends on the ultimate project that gets built and how it gets designed. What we've recommended and what we see on a lot of our other projects is determining a a total open space requirement for the whole project based on like a per unit requirement. And then of that total open space requirement, there's an additional, you know, twenty-five percent of that has to be accessible to the public or or some percentage of the total open space must be accessible to the public. And then that ensures that it's going to happen, but also allows flexibility to be designed where it's actually going to be used and most accessible.
Yeah, and and activate it and have, it's important to have eyes on it and um, yes, great. Um, you you mentioned a bit, especially in the third proposal about uh how it's easier to finance. And that's one of the things that I've been thinking about also is like we're looking at the stationary plan. And I'm curious if there are things that we should consider to facilitate or if it would help uh the project to explore other ways to facilitate incremental development on large sites like this. It doesn't all have to be built and financed at once. Is there anything that we should be considering on that front?
Um, that that's a great question, one that we're asking ourselves on a handful of projects. And what I'm hearing from development partners is large projects over two hundred and fifty units are actually very difficult, if not impossible, to finance right now if they're not feasible. And so, you know, what they're looking for is the ability to construct something, lease or sell it, get some income that then supports the financing of the second phase before it starts construction. So um the easiest answer is the flexibility for phasing a project.
Yeah, that makes a lot of sense. Uh, I think that's all that's on my mind. Any other commissioners have questions? Great. Go ahead and carry on.
Right, well, big thank you to both teams. Um, as Ally kind of alluded to, um, their their presentations did a really good job of helping us imagine what's possible. But taking it a step back, I wanted to zoom us out a little bit and remind the commission and the community that the task at hand again is to develop a zoning code that um is really designed to unlock possibilities. It's not about approving one project or making a specific project work, but unlocking possibilities that achieve the vision and goals of our comprehensive plan and of the neighborhood plan that we that we worked on. So with that, I wanted to start the um process of going through the table. I'll explain a little bit how we've set it up in presentation form. Um, and please jump in if you have any questions on on format or of process.
One one quick question. Um, at some point, I imagine in the course of this, we'll want to take a little break. Uh, I want to take a little like send some on the commission, how are you doing? Uh, keep going for now. Uh, find a spot for a break later. Are you good? Alright, let's go.
Right, get into it. Make sure this is. Okay, great. So this is an example of what you're going to be seeing um for the next a lot of slides, but uh the next few slides are going to look a lot like this. We'll start with each development standard's intent. This is really just to describe um the purpose of each development standard as it relates to the site. So um you'll see some references to our comprehensive plan policies. Um, it's it's, should be understood that our comprehensive plan has asked us to conduct this work. It's asked us to develop zoning code amendments for these sites. So while um there might be opposition to housing in general on the sites, we're really trying to move forward and just just better describe and amend the zoning to um figure out how to make those those policies a reality. You'll see that certain standards, so we'll have an applicant request, which you've heard a lot about um already. We'll then provide a range of options. They're generally listed from most to least restrictive. Um, and they include a variety of requirements themselves, but then also a re- a variety of methods for regulating. Um, so there's kind of layers to it. The um certain, let me go forward. Then we'll, um, slides will contain a staff recommendation. So certain standards do hold, most standards do hold a staff recommendation to best align with policy direction. Um, there are some others where the applicant has a preferred option, um, which is noted in their request due to feasibility and, you know, optimized project performance. Um, and so for some of those, we've left the staff recommendation as undetermined. Uh, and I'll explain why for each of those as we go. But mostly, this is because either the options provided, all options can accomplish the objective of the standard. So uh there's multiple ways to activate a ground floor, for example. Um, or they might be left undetermined because we didn't receive or we didn't hear clearly a piece uh planning commission preference. So we are going to be looking to the commission to better understand um like their their approach to how they would like staff to regulate the certain standards. Uh, overall, um, we'll be looking for planning commission preference for all the standards. Uh, moving forward, where there are no ranges provided. Moving forward, where there are no ranges provided, some of them, as you might have noticed in the table, there aren't ranges provided. So staff would use our recommendation for a draft code unless directed otherwise. So that's something to note as well. And we'll pause, we plan to pause after each, each standard to give you all a chance to discuss and perhaps reach a consensus on a recommendation for the standard or perhaps move on. That'll be kind of up to you all to indicate. But a couple of the standards also have a question for the commission. Aside from what's your preferred option, there might be some clarifying questions that are sprinkled in, and I'll elevate those as we go. Any questions?
No, go ahead.
I hear that our video team has asked us to take a break.
All right. We've reached the end of the first recording tape perhaps. No. All right, we'll take a break and come back in a few.
What time?
I don't know. Helen?
Eight o'clock.
Eight o'clock? All right, sounds good.
Thank you.
All right, and we are back to resume the planning commission meeting as we start to step through some of the area options for recommendation. Leandra, would you like to?
Yes, thank you so much. Yeah, hopping right back in, the, I think we've kind of captured what the next slides will look like. So moving on, I wanted to also provide you with an example use zone chart. So for both sites, we're going to be recommending that a new use line is added to the zoning chapters to describe standards that are specific to mixed-use development. So whatever we decide on and the standards that we compile, we're suggesting that they only apply to mixed-use development specifically. That way, standards for things like retail-only and housing-only aren't affected. The planning commission preferred options and the staff recommendations will ultimately be drafted into a chart that looks very similar to this. We plan on bringing again, like one draft code to the, to the public hearing for response and a draft use zone chart that looks very similar to this. Again, we can work on creating, if there is certain standards that the planning commission wants to not, not decide a preference on and bring maybe a refined list of options to the public hearing, we can work on creating some sort of matrix, hopefully with less words and less topics for legibility's sake, but that can accompany our draft code for the public hearing. I know we, we heard from some of the commissioners that maybe the public hearing should reflect options for people to respond to. So that's an option. If there are certain standards, we'll want to be understanding which are needing more ranges. Okay, moving on, JBD four development standards. The applicants both did a great job kind of explaining their requests, but just a quick overview for the JBD four site. This is the Michael's site-specific applicant request, but it will apply to both parcels. Again, seventy-five-foot maximum building height, density to accommodate about one-hundred-and-seventy residential units, four-to-five-thousand square feet about of commercial that fronts mainly northeast Juanita Drive. They're also asking for reduced parking requirements, adjusted affordable housing requirements, which we'll get into a little bit, and then increased maximum lot coverage. And overall, as you've heard tonight, flexible standards for making those potential projects work. I also wanted to highlight the buffer, critical area buffers that are impacting the site or that will impact the site. This is a very, very approximate graphic to show possible buffer locations based on our critical area codes, just to give an idea to the commission and community how the site is really affected by our current critical area protection requirements. And you'll hear a lot more about those in just a bit from our senior planners, Anna and Jen, on how those standards work. But these are wetland buffers, potential wetland buffers. You'll see seventy-five, one-hundred-and-ten, and even up to two-hundred-and-twenty-five feet of buffer. There are very stringent requirements on what's allowed in the buffer and big mixed-use structures aren't one of them. So keep that in mind when we assess what's possible outside the buffers. All right, hopping in, for uses, the intent of the use regulations, of course, are to promote mixed-use development as is aligned with the policy J sixteen. The applicant, as you heard, was requesting general flexibility for commercial use types, not requiring a certain commercial use to occupy the ground floor. So as I stated, we'll be recommending a new use line for developments that contain two or more of the following uses. And then I added the note that a development that does contain two or more of the uses may also include one or more of the other uses that are allowed in the zone. So it doesn't have to be any, all of the uses listed in the use zone chart, but those will have to be a part of the project. I think that's it for uses. So now, I guess, would be an appropriate time for the commission to indicate if their preferred option differs at all from the staff recommendation.
I like the staff recommendation.
Great.
Any, any other viewpoints? All right.
Great. Thank you. Ground floor requirements, we also heard a good amount about from our property owners, but the intent is obviously to activate the ground floor level of the development, use the high-traffic location, that is the JBD four zone, to really enhance the pedestrian experience. We want to obviously also create viable commercial spaces that succeed and promote neighborhood-serving retail. So we've added options for regulating how much commercial space is provided. You'll see option one is to require a minimum linear frontage of a range of anywhere from sixty to eighty percent. That could differ as well if the commission desires. And then also applying a minimum or an average or both depth requirement. That is the applicant's request, that aligns with the applicant's request, rather. We also, in other areas of the zoning code, we regulate commercial based on the percentage of the building's ground floor. So if that were to be the preferred option, we would recommend maybe fifty to seventy-five, although we heard from, from the applicant on, on reasons why that might not be favorable. And then option C, to regulate ground floor loosely. We do this in the Juanita Village zoning code for JBD one, and it basically just asks us to predominate retail use along the bottom, but it doesn't provide any specific percentages or, or standards other than that. So those are the options that staff has recommended. The applicant's request is visible. Our recommendation, we left it undetermined, just to allow for you to advise based on what you've heard from the applicant. And we do believe that, heading back a little bit, we do believe that all of these will achieve the intent of activating the ground floor. So looking to understand from the commission their preference there. Some considerations are that the site will likely require at-grade parking due to environmental soil conditions and things that I'm not too aware of personally, scientifically. But they're requesting that we consider that the site would likely require at-grade parking. And then the design regulations in JBD zones, all JBD zones now currently require all buildings to front a right-of-way or a through-block pathway. It doesn't mention that commercial uses need to front the street, but it mentions that the building should. So that's something to keep in mind. The questions that are displayed on the screen are a little bit outside of the purview of the options here about how to regulate how much commercial space. It's also kind of getting to questions about where that commercial space should be required to, like which intersection or which street, excuse me, should those commercial requirements be applicable to? And then we're also curious if you have any strong opinions on, excuse me, the residential ancillary uses such as lobbies, fitness rooms, things that are only available to residents, but do create some sort of active environment? If those should be allowed to occupy the ground floor? If so, to what extent? It didn't make it on the slide, but in, excuse me, in other zones, we use like intervening commercial to separate residential ancillary uses from the front of the facade. So that's an option. And we can, we can get into that a little bit more if needed. But looking to understand your preference on how much commercial space as well as the answers here, or excuse me, the questions here.
Any comments from commissioners? Uh, Commissioner Rosman?
Looking at the site, it seems like there's not a ton of frontage along Ninety-Eighth, and that really doesn't seem like it makes sense for retail use as far as like pedestrian experience and all that. So I think honestly, their request from the So, I, I think honestly their request from the applicant sounds very reasonable with the depth of require, uh, commercial requirement and having it along Wantita Drive, so.
I, I was thinking along similar lines, but I'd even like, kind of similar to what I was saying earlier, but like a depth, I, I mean, having some activation there would be great. I wouldn't even necessarily expect a depth of 20 feet just because it is a constrained site. There's probably going to be parking behind, you know, on the, the lower floors behind the commercial. And it, I don't, I don't, this isn't a great accessible site for the turn that retail could potentially create. So, yeah, I, I'd be inclined to err on the side of less requirements for, for commercial here.
I will also just interject to mention that these would apply to the Cathacali parcel as well. So, if we have any interest in orienting commercial uses toward the, the front as we head south to the park, that, that's something to consider.
I want to get clarification. So, option C allows for the applicant to dictate what and where the retail space is located on the site, right?
Yes, unless, to an extent, though, because the JBD zones require all buildings to front the, front the street. So, they could theoretically design retail in the back, but it, that wouldn't, I don't think makes sense.
Right, but it allows them the option to decide what and where relative to the site so that we're not necessarily telling them what to do. Is that, is that correct?
Yes.
And with the constraints of the sites, it seems like option C, in my opinion, would probably be the one that would make the most sense, but maybe I'm, I'm missing something.
Commissioner Roser?
My comments on this. My comments on this would be that, I mean, currently, the retail doesn't front on Wantita Drive. You have to go around the corner to get in the front door. So, I, I think they should have, especially with the wetlands and every other, you know, aspect they have, but I think there needs to be a requirement that there is some retail on this site because it can service both the residents, and there's a lot of foot traffic going to the parks. So, I, I think the flexibility, you know, sometimes I think the workout room on the first floor is a total cop-out because we've seen this with lots of developers. They want to put their gym and say, oh, it's going to be so active, and then it's not. It's just a room with a lot of workout equipment. I, I just would rather there be a retail, and I think the lobby should be separate from what are retail. I don't think we should include the lobby into the active space for retail. It should be separate requirements.
Question. It looks like, oh, and then I'll get to Commissioner Medea. It looks like the frontage facing Wantita Drive is about 160 feet or so, is that?
Yes, if you give me just a moment, I have the, my approximate mapped length.
And we, and I'm imagining that we, there wouldn't be a driveway continuing on, facing the street at that point, the access, vehicular access would primarily be on the backside, most likely.
From my understanding, they plan to utilize the existing access points. Both, yes. And the approximate frontage of northeast Wantita Drive for just the Michael's parcel is about 120 feet.
Okay, okay. And then the driveway to the north, northwest, would that be covered by, likely be covered by a building? I mean, I, I know that's, we're talking about a specific project, but.
Not sure I can pull up the, the site, just one moment.
It's the, the driveway off of Wantita Drive is what I'm speaking of that goes parallel to the building.
The right turn only?
Yeah, the right in, right out.
It's hard to say without a, a set of development plans. So, I, I don't feel confident speaking to that.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I was just thinking like if there's, if there's no side setback requirements, you know, it's possible they would build out to the, the edge of the site, and that wouldn't really be, you know, the really only frontage is what's facing the street there, and that's, okay.
And we, we'll see later. There are some other standards, especially there are design reviews or giant design regulations that do require some space between, even though there is no strict front yards, or front setback or front required yard, you'll see our design regulations strongly suggest some, some communal open space near the, between the sidewalk and the building.
That makes sense, yes. Commissioner Medea?
Thank you. I echo comments from Commissioner Roser, but I, I'm having a challenge settling on a recommendation when I'm still not clear on how we've solved for the, for the egress and ingress. We, we talked a little bit about it just now, but as it stands, as you're heading westbound on Wantita Drive and turn left into Michael's, you got to do that weird thing through that property. I, I'm not clear on how we're going to get traffic in and out of there. Is it part of the mitigation projects that are also outlined in the staff memo would be part of what the developer has to include in their TIA? I'm not clear on that at all, and it's hard for me to make a recommendation without understanding that piece better.
Yeah, thanks, Commissioner Medea. The, it's my understanding that the traffic impact analysis will also inform our transportation engineers on access. So, they'll use the findings, the, the traffic data, the, the safety and, you know, crash data as well to, to advise on access. That, I know that doesn't really explain it too much, but that's, that's as much as I know as, as far as the zoning amendments are concerned. Like, the, the deeper analysis does come a bit later.
And if I could just jump in real quick, Commissioner Medea. I think, so right now, the left turn that you can take to get into the Michael's site, so where you can turn and then go behind the Widener Building, that's the access easement that the applicants were mentioning earlier. Our understanding is that they would propose to continue to use that access point for their left-turn entrance for people heading northwest on Wantita Drive. So, we're, that's the assumption. We've been working on knowing that the more detailed analysis at Development Room might yield something slightly different, but that's the assumption we've been working on as we draft these codes is that most access will be coming from that driveway near the Widener Building.
Versus northbound on 98th approaching 116th, taking a left, like into what is now the Indian Restaurant?
Correct, correct.
Commissioner Jacobson? To get back to the ground floor retail requirements, I kind of agree with Commissioner Robbins. This is a tough site. I want to make sure that we have flexibility. Thinking ahead, I don't want to give flexibility on affordable housing. I think that's a major city priority, and so I want to give flexibility on ground floor retail requirements. I think it's, in terms of requiring ground floor retail on 98th, I think I'm fine with requiring it for only one of the two streets for both of these properties. I think that's a way that we can make sure we still have the retail for this site and the retail for the Cathacali site if and when that redevelops. So, I'm in favor of option C. And I am, I don't know about gyms, I'm open to it. I am definitely open to including residential lobbies as activating ground floor use.
I guess I'll just concur with both of those thoughts.
Sounds good. Do you like more formal guidance on this point before you continue? Yeah, sounds good.
What I might recommend is that, if possible, we get a preferred option that we can plug into the draft code, but we could also move forward as alternative options to take to the public hearings that you get public feedback on it. Any other options that maybe other commissioners are interested in that don't fall into the majority? If that seems like a fair approach, that's what we could do on, on each one.
Commissioner Roser?
One of the problems I have, I, I think that, yes, the Kafka site would definitely confront 98th. But the Michael's site, I, I think we should grant them the flexibility of letting the applicant decide because it may be that they face the same way that Michael's is currently facing and have the retail inward. I, I think you're tying their hands if you say it has to face a street.
I might just point out, I think, I think that sort of endorses option C. Okay.
Is anyone opposed to option C based on what I'm hearing so far? All right. I think, sounds like we're good on C then.
Okay, great. And then if we could get a little bit of a more formal preference on whether or not they, the commercial uses should be required to front both streets? I think was, some of us have, or some of you have touched on it. And then should the ancillary uses be allowed on ground floor? I think we just need a little bit more there, if, if it's ready. Option C does regulate how much retail is provided, and we would probably draft something similar to Wantita Village where we say retail and restaurant and tavern and, you know, services selling goods should predominate the ground floor. But that doesn't address if they need to front a certain street. So, a bit of a nuance question.
Yes, I'm, I'm also looking at, you know, seeing that the recommended, or the option C indicates the majority of the ground floor would be commercial use. I wonder if maybe a better approach would be the majority of any exposed frontage? Just because that would give the flexibility either way.
The only thing is if the Cathacali site develops separately, that would mean that the majority of their frontage would also have to be commercial then, right? If we said it that way. I'm just a little concerned if that one develops by itself, you know. Cathacali is like the one restaurant that's survived any length of time, knock on wood, that they stick around. But like, there's a reason why that's been a revolving retail space. So, I would be careful requiring anything down there, especially on its own, especially if there's no retail along 100th leading up to it, and it's just kind of by itself.
Yep. So, allow, uh, maybe requiring it for the majority of frontage along Wantita Drive, leaving the option open for frontage elsewhere. Is that fair?
We can draft something up like that for you to respond to.
And then that, that reduces the depth requirement, I think, too. Is there, is there a sense of like reducing the depth requirement? I mean, like 20, 30 feet depth requirement? I think like a majority of the floor, well, one inhibits the, makes the parking more expensive. And I'm not sure that there's really enough gravity to support a large amount of retail. Commissioner Jacobson?
Yeah, I don't want to, I don't want us to be requiring a majority of the ground floor to be a commercial, and it's probably going to have to be a majority parking to make the project work.
And just to, to note, the option C doesn't have a minimum depth requirement attached to it.
Yeah, it's just a majority of the ground floor is what's currently drafted, and I want to make sure that we don't, especially with such, with the, what could be a narrow frontage lot.
Oh, I see.
That implying that the depth be so much greater. So, so I think that the flexibility of C, but even more flexibility acknowledging the unique limitations of this site, some of the majority of exposed frontage, the majority of accessible frontage on Wantita is required flexibility elsewhere.
Okay, sounds good. Moving right along to the pedestrian-oriented street standards. This is one of the standards that doesn't come with a range. We have identified the intent, the intent to promote safe and efficient pedestrian movement. We've heard a lot about that corner, and we're looking to enhance the connection between the development and the public realm, and then also reinforce our human-scale design principles in our neighborhood centers, similar to, to Wantita Village. So, staff is recommending to update our zoning code to include a plate, plate 34I. It already exists without that, that red call-out. It exists today. So, we would just be extending that pedestrian-oriented street designation down to the south. This doesn't require commercial to front the, the rest of 98th, but it does imply that certain frontage improvements associated with pedestrian-oriented streets, like 10-foot sidewalks, are a requirement now. So, that's the main purpose of this designation is to, to capture those pedestrian-oriented frontage improvements. Although, as we'll discuss in just a couple slides, we're interested in some additional public benefits that would include an enhanced right-of-way, so a little bit more than that 10 feet. And so, those right-of-way improvements would be required through code and would supersede any of the pedestrian-oriented standards for, for improving the, the frontage.
Commissioner Jacobson?
I'm fine with the staff recommendation on this.
Any concerns? All right.
Awesome. Moving on to density, this is another one, pretty straightforward. We had plans to remove the current density, which, or the current minimum lot size, which is about 1,800 square feet, or, yeah, that's the regulating, regulation for density. It's not a minimum lot size per se, but it, it regulates how many units you're allowed to produce. So, the staff recommendation is to remove that requirement of 1,800 square feet per unit and allow other development standards to govern the, the maximum capacity of the site. So, things like setback in height would regulate the density as opposed to a specific number. And that's aligned with the policy.
Commissioner Jacobson?
To move us along, I support the staff recommendation.
See general nodding of heads. So, sounds good? Oh, oh. Oh, commit, oh, how did I miss? I, I tried to watch it, but yeah, okay, all right. Yeah, Commissioner Medea, go ahead.
To be fair, I raised my hand just as you were scanning the room and thinking we had consensus. Okay, so I have a lot to say about this and, and the next one as well. So, what we're being asked to do today is basically consider a veritable kaleidoscope of options, right, to yield hopefully a coherent outcome that adequately addresses the variety of concerns that we've heard repeatedly through public comment, public testimony, neighborhood meetings, emails, et cetera. So, I know we're going to do our best to try to come to that cohesive outcome, you know, with some due diligence and, and thought. Where I'm struggling has to do with concurrency, right? So, I know concurrency is supposed to go a long way to addressing the congestion, egress, vehicular, and pedestrian safety concerns, all of that. And with all due respect to the experts in that space, I really, really am hopeful that those gains can be realized. But I, I need help because as I look at this information, what I, what I'm sure of is that concurrency ensures infrastructure, but do we really understand the true impacts of those projects, right? So, do we have more information now? Because it sounds like we're relying a lot on a memo to council from 2024 and still need from the developers the, the TIA analysis. But even with that, are we certain that it's going to solve for the, the real queuing issues that are happening now? Even if we assume, based on the presentation today, that the, with reduced parking minimums, we could expect 70 trips, which is less than current. But if we added in the projections related to commercial usage or retail, we might net out. So, I am really looking for. So I am really looking for absolute assurance, and I know that's hard to give, that what looks good on paper in terms of the mitigation projects and all of that can actually come to fruition and can achieve the, the ease that we're looking for, that the, the release, rather, of that pressure valve at that intersection. And, you know, unless, unless I feel really comfortable about that, I have a hard time wanting to push to max height. And then we can wrap all that in the other challenges with just the difficulty of that site overall. So I will go on mute and let you respond, but those are my, my concerns.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Medea. They're valid and very common concerns that we're hearing city or from, from the community. So I will say that the, the level of detail you're looking for does come, as I mentioned, it comes at the project level of the review. The, the concurrency projects that are designed to mitigate any failures at the intersections are funded through our capital improvement program, which means in the next six years they should be implemented, is my understanding. And then we also will be using the TIA to answer a lot of those questions during development and review. So, and I think Adam has a couple of comments as well, but I, I understand your concern. As I mentioned earlier, the, the level of, of analysis that you're looking for typically follows the zoning code amendments. And just because we regulate height and we increase the height, they'll still be required to prove how the project will work through development review. So by granting the height, that's saying, yes, you can build to this height as long as you comply with every other standard that we have. So just to offer that.
Commissioner, Commissioner Rosman?
Yeah, so I want to specifically first speak to this piece. I think a lot of your concerns are actually on the next slide. This one is just saying specifically that we're not limiting density beyond height. I also want to say that, you know, I think the transportation engineer was pretty clear that even a full build out of the site isn't going to have a greater impact than is currently on that site. So I want to be really careful to require a property to take on a large burden that is not theirs. If we look at the total number of cars that go through that intersection per hour at peak PM, 100 cars is negligible compared to the number that go through that intersection every hour. So while it would be great to have those project improvements, it's not on this site to fix the entire intersection for all of the commuters that go through there in the evenings. Thanks.
Commissioner Reiser?
Okay, one of the concerns I have, especially when we looked at the, that little piece where we were improving the sidewalks and improving the pedestrian experience, what happens if the other property never redevelops? Are we going to end up in that situation where we have all these new construction houses in old neighborhoods and there's a sidewalk right in front of their house that no one uses because no one else has a sidewalk on the street?
From what I understand, our code does require any frontage improvements to, to connect in an accessible way to surrounding development. And the sidewalk does widen a little bit as you come farther south. It's the corner itself that's super constrained and can't even fit two wheelchairs passing. So as soon as you get past that, there's a little more space, but there would definitely be more requirements for Kathkali once they, once they redevelop and to expand that sidewalk. But they would, they would be required to connect in a way that it's usable.
Okay. Commissioner Jacobson?
I just want to go over a few things. We studied the amount of housing that was, that's being proposed here as part of the comprehensive plan. We said that we were not going to do other ideas for more housing and said we would do projects like these. The idea of sacrificing housing at, at this site, I think, goes against our comprehensive plan. It goes against what we said to the people who engaged in the comprehensive planning process. And I'm, I just don't think we should be sacrificing affordable housing for a request that goes above and beyond the normal process when we have already received more information on these specific impacts than we would in the normal process.
Commissioner Rosman?
To move us along from this slide, I am going to make a motion to recommend the staff recommendation as listed on this slide.
Second.
Is that a motion helpful to staff? Yeah. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
I think, is that one no and the rest yes?
Thank you. Moving to building height, we heard from the property owners team about the, their, their perceived need for 75 as opposed to anything less. So, but with the intent of the policies we have adopted in the comprehensive plan, we've been asked to unlock vertical capacity within this zone to provide additional housing opportunities. We also want the building height to contribute to the vibrancy of the business district. That includes pedestrian oriented retail spaces, which often require a taller floor to ceiling height to succeed and attract tenants, as we heard from, from the property owners as well. So we have provided a range of options. Option A is in alignment more so with surrounding development. Option C is the applicant request and staff recommendation, and of course you can choose anything in between if, if you feel so inclined. But our staff recommendation does align with the applicant's request for, for many of the reasons we've discussed. Some things to consider, there frankly is a minimum number of units that are needed to justify land and construction cost. We've, we heard that earlier. The site is pretty unique and it has some environmental constraints. That coupled with all of the required street improvements and public open space, these are all things that should be considered when, when assessing how to move a feasible project forward or how to create zoning that produces feasible projects. And then just as a, a little minor note, our requirements for rooftop amenities and our rooftop common rooms and a pertinent supply, which basically just say you can go a certain amount above the request of the, over the height limit for these, for these types of improvements or additions to the structure. I'll hop back to this slide just to have the options available.
Commissioner Rosman?
I just want to second Commissioner Jacobson's comments on the comprehensive plan and all of the public outreach and conversations we had. We were very clearly told that the place that folks said that housing belongs is in our neighborhood centers. This is one of our neighborhood centers and very clearly fits exactly the conversation we've been having over the last year. And beyond that, the environmental setbacks because of the wetlands and the requests for, you know, really great pedestrian space and a great, you know, human scale entrance to Juanita right here. I think, you know, if we are going to stick to what we have been talking about over the last year, option C is the only one that makes sense when we look at our city as a whole. Thanks.
Commissioner Medea?
Thank you. And, and, and just to be clear, I, I understand, we, we have some difficult issues to work through and we did agree in the comprehensive plan where we would focus density. And I, I wish this site was just more feasible and conducive to achieving that vision. I, I just remain concerned that, that the challenges are quite steep and I'm not convinced at this point that we're able to mitigate them. I hear you, I do. We also have an equal responsibility to address those concerns expressed by the community in, in a way that will fix, fix the problem. So, you know, where I stand, thanks.
And Commissioner Medea, just to clarify, that's primarily concerns around traffic impacts?
Any and all of it. Traffic impacts, the, yeah, congestion, traffic, egress, et cetera, pedestrian safety, access to the public spaces, just in a way that's not going to upend that's, that space. I'm not sure, especially with still ongoing needs to see additional traffic analyses, et cetera. We're asked, we're, we're being asked to make zoning recommendations and give direction to staff today. And, you know, I know that's how the process works, but it's, it, it's a big leap of faith on this particular parcel. I have less concerns for the goodwill site. I wish this was a different parcel. I wish there were less issues.
Okay.
Chair Rutherford?
Yes.
Could I, um, is, would it be okay if I just responded to the traffic concerns just one more time?
Sure.
I, I think, and I think it should really just to underscore something that Leandra said. I think there, right again, as, as the commissioners have mentioned, we did a very program level traffic analysis as part of the comprehensive plan, assuming, you know, the densities that we're talking about on these two sites and we felt like overall the transportation system could work. So the next thing that we're faced with is the site-specific analysis, right, which is really dependent on where egress and ingress happens on the project site, right? I, for Commissioner Medea, I would say there is a scenario where the zoning is adopted and then a application is submitted for a specific development project. We do a transportation impact analysis and we conclude ultimately that the project does not work, right? That is, that is actually a possibility, in which case the project would be denied at that point. In reality, what would happen is that there would be mitigation identified that would probably make the project work and that might be different ways to access the project, different ways to leave the project, changes to the intersection, changes to the traffic signals, et cetera. So in almost every single case for a project of this scale and density, there would be a technical fix to make the project work. But I just want to acknowledge that if it really doesn't work from a traffic perspective, like if it simply does not meet our, our city of Kirkland traffic standards, the, the permit would be denied. So I don't know if that gives you more comfort or less comfort, but just wanted to give a sense of how that might actually play out once we get to the actual development stage.
I appreciate that.
Thanks for clarifying. Commissioner Jacobson?
Since it seems like Commissioner Medea wants to register her opinion, should I just make a motion so that we can take a vote and move on?
Go ahead, yeah.
I move to, that we direct staff to a draft code aligning with the applicant's request.
Second.
Any further discussion? All the, oh.
I guess I'll say one more thing. You know, part of the comprehensive plan and the number of units that we said that we were making room for, including what, you know, was approved by PSRC with our housing numbers, you know, if, if we're really concerned about a site that we'd already said we were going to have housing on, we could talk about putting housing elsewhere. So if, if this is really not where people want, you know, if we want to talk some of the transit corridors as an alternate, you know, the point is, is that we want to make sure that there is enough housing as, you know, we discussed as a city. I think this site makes sense, especially since it doesn't look like the traffic impact is going to be any greater than what it is today. But if it is that big of a concern, you know, I'm willing to talk about other locations where we could add more housing density as well.
Commissioner Reiser?
I actually have no problem with the height, but with giving that height, I don't want the project to come back with, oh, we can't do retail in the basement after we gave them a 15-foot first floor. So I am fine with that, but I think the public also deserves the other benefits.
Which, which we've already recommended.
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay, great. Okay. Any further discussion before we vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
All right. One no, the rest yes. And on to the next.
All right. Moving right along, similar kind of concepts here. So the height transitions between the zones, the intent here for these regulations in general is just to support cohesion between more intense zones and less intense zones. We all obviously, or we always want to avoid conflicts that may arise from contrasting uses. The options we provided to the commission include using a transition strategy that we adopted through the Northeast 85th Street Station Area Plan, which is required when the allowed maximum height for the subject parcel is greater than 30 feet above the maximum allowed height for the parcels adjacent. I have a, a slide from the station area zoning that kind of illustrates this. Basically, we would be looking about 15 feet back from the common property line, establishing the maximum height from the, the lower intensity zone on that line, going up to that height. And then from there, we would draw an angle at about 25 or 30 degrees, depending on what's abutting. And then that would be the, the kind of building envelope that they would be required to comply with. Since there's no height requirements for a park use, we would use the more restrictive angle of 30, 30 degrees when it's 50 feet or more than 50 feet difference. And so just to illustrate that, if we decide to adopt this transition strategy, because the JBD 5 zone has a permitted height of 26 feet, although the buildings on site are much higher than that, they would be required to have a 25-degree transition on along those common property lines. And then the purple dash line to the south, budding the park, would be where the more stringent angle would apply. We have recommended that as an option. It is a, as a, as I think Allison Warner from Alboa mentioned, it's a, it's a strategy that, that makes sense and addresses community concerns and while also still allowing, you know, or try, attempting to prevent some overbearing, overbearing buildings. So we're recommending that be an option. Oh, I think I might be missing an option where you don't have to. Option B would be to not employ this. And then some, some considerations to keep in, in your mind are that the height transitions don't apply to the facade facing the right-of-way. So this wouldn't apply to the front of the building, just the back and the sides. And then a minimum 15-foot wide landscape strip would accompany these transition areas where our landscape buffer requirements kick in as well, unless the planning commission directs otherwise.
Any comments from the commission? Commissioner Reiser?
I think it sounds incredibly reasonable and especially if the applicant said it was okay.
I will say that I, I haven't heard feedback either way from the Michaels team, I don't think, about this, but I'll, I'll confer with them to make sure, or to check if this is something they're amenable to. I didn't hear otherwise, but the goodwill team is the team that has their own kind of standard too. But yes, understood.
The one question I have is, on the side where the park is, I don't, you know, the sun actually is, I don't know if you need to go the 30, the, the more stringent on that side because it's not going to affect, it's not going to shade the park.
Does the daylight plane take of, is that, is that only with respect to the direction of the sun or is this like theoretical daylight that might come from any angle?
It's a sky exposure plane.
Sky exposure, okay. Got it, okay. Thank you for clarifying. Commissioner Jacobson?
I actually would be in support of no height transitions between these zones. We're talking about a neighborhood center. As was mentioned, the buildings in these cases are taller than the allowed heights. The, I think there's a different conversation for the goodwill site. And I think part of the reason why the, we've heard from the goodwill property owners that they're okay with it is because they've got a lot more space to work with. This is a lot more space constrained site. This sort of requirement is going to be a, a lot more penalizing for them. Should I make a motion or?
I'm, I'm not, I'm good with that.
Okay.
Any, you can, you're welcome to make a motion unless you want to hear more from others first.
I also agree with option B and would not want to put any further constraints on the development of the site as far as what the units might actually look like and the livability. as far as what the units might actually look like and the livability.
All right. Commissioner Jacobson, you want to make a motion then?
I move that we direct staff to draft code language in alignment with option B to require no height transitions between zones.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I think is that unanimous then?
Great, thank you. All right, so for the next couple of slides, I wanted to just take a second to talk about design regulations and design review and even a little bit further about our design districts and our design guidelines. So the design districts as they stand are listed on screen. These are good use case examples showcasing the successes of our design review process thus far. These are places that employ really great design elements. And we already use these regulation, use our design regulations to, to foster development in these areas. The JBD zone or the Wanita Business District is a, is a part of that. So it's already a designated design district. Our DRB, our Design Review Board, is comfortable with these strategies and staff and builders are also familiar with them. Design review is a broad term to encompass the processes for administering Chapter 142 of our zoning code. That does include options for administrative design review, which is conducted by staff. Our Design Board Review or DBR is, includes our Design Review Board, our DRB. And then it also includes multiple public meetings, although our efforts to streamline and objectify our design review process might affect how many public meetings, or will, it will reduce it to one. And public notice is also required, so that's the distinction there. However, both processes will look to both our design regulations and our design guidelines to ensure that the product of the, the development is aligned with, with our standards. So design regulations include Chapter 92. I've listed a couple of section names, so just things that get regulated through design regulations. These are objective and although there is flexibility in the ability for applicants to propose alternatives or to offer slight deviations, they're required to administer a, a portion of those requirements. The design guidelines, we have those for our pedestrian-oriented business districts. These are intentionally flexible, they're non-prescriptive, they just kind of get at the intent of each element of design review. They do include tailored and unique provisions based on the design district. So you'll see special considerations for the central business district or special considerations for the Bridle Trails Neighborhood Center. So what, we can discuss that a little bit more when we talk about goodwill, if that's the route planning commission wants to take. But there are already considerations for the Wanita Business District within the guidelines to support vibrant mixed-use centers. Having said that, the techniques to achieve architectural scale and human scale will affect how we regulate our vertical definition from the right-of-way as well as our horizontal modulation and facade length, if you decide to take that route. So I wanted to just provide those lists. They're in your, they're in the table. It's not very user-friendly. So there are, the techniques to achieve architectural scale listed here. Buildings three or more stories, which apply to both sites, will likely apply to both sites. They have to use two or more techniques to achieve that architectural scale. You'll see that three of these moderate vertical scale using different techniques, while two of them moderate horizontal scale. So they can, they have an opportunity to choose which elements they incorporate. And then the applicant may also propose other techniques, as I mentioned, elements or methods that achieve human scale that might not be listed. Those alternatives, they have to comply with applicable design guidelines and our comprehensive plan. So things like vertical modul, modulation of the roof line and roof form articulation. The, there is one about second stories, or all stories above the second story must step back at least 10 feet. So while that's possible, there is a chance that an applicant can avoid that and reduce carve-outs of the building by implementing perhaps option two and three instead. So just wanted to make that clear, that if we decide to rely on design regulations, that there is flexibility that doesn't ensure outcomes. But still, it gets at the essence of, of what the intent of design review is. There's, this is a list of nine different techniques. If we want to go through them, we can, they're here, so you can better understand what those mean. But for vertical definition from the right-of-way in an attempt to achieve a consistent architectural and human scale within our design districts, we are suggesting that there are no added requirements to the zoning code that modulate the building. We're asking, or we're recommending that the site rely on our design regulations and design review that I just walked you through to regulate those things. The other options include requiring specific upper-story setbacks, which we have done in the past. And another option, less, the least stringent option of them all would be to not even require them to pick from that menu. This, sorry to flip back, but this menu, we could exempt them from having to do any of these if the commission wishes. So hopping back, the applicant didn't have a specific request, but the, the, the general request of flexibility through the design review process and offering adjustments or alternatives is, was their request. So I guess it does align with option B a bit. Some considerations for option B that I, that I already touched on are that they can select only horizontal or only vertical modulation strategies. That's within their purview to do. And then the applicant has the ability, again, to offer different, different methods. Oopsie, sorry.
Commissioner Jacobson?
I want to start with a question and then I'll get into my comments. Does administrative design review also offer the applicant flexibility in terms of how they comply with these regulations?
It does, yes.
Okay. I think design review has made our housing more expensive, less sustainable, and actually worse from a pedestrian perspective. But I don't want to bog this conversation down in whether we should have design review or not. So I would offer a compromise that we allow the developers to go through either the, the design review board in the new process that we don't know exactly what it will look like yet, or through administrative design review and let them choose. And that, that way we can also rely on our design guidelines to ensure horizontal and vertical modulation.
This is option B. Mostly?
For this one specifically, yes, it's option B.
Further discussion? Do I hear any dissent? All right, I guess option B.
You want a motion?
Sure.
I motion to recommend option B.
Second. Specific to the, is that specific enough for you?
Yep.
Okay. All, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Great.
Carry on.
Very similar question here. Because those chapters of our design regulations have methods for horizontal modulation kind of baked into that menu, we're requesting, or we're, excuse me, we're recommending the same approach to modulate horizontal scale and moderate horizontal scale, just relying on the applicant to choose methods that work best for them as it applies to the design regulations.
I think we go with option B. I don't think we need a motion on this.
Any dissent?
Great, thank you. All right, parking, let me know how much time you'd like to spend on this. Obviously, there's a lot going on at the state level, so this might be a moot discussion. But the applicant's request is, as we know, 0.5 parking spaces per unit regardless of size. They're asking for one parking space per thousand square feet of commercial gross floor area. We can retain existing parking minimums. I have them on the next screen if we, if we would like to review those ratios. We can employ the reduced ratios studied and adopted through the station area, which give some relaxed minimums for like, things like affordable units and, and whatnot. Or we can grant the property owner's full parking request. Obvious, or the commission should consider State Bill 5184. I think we'll know by early next week whether or not that is official, official, but it is pretty far in the process. Applicant has, the applicant has expressed that option A and B would be largely unfeasible for the type of unit supply they'd like to provide. And then our current standards require 10% of all residential spaces to be required as guest parking. There's the current ratios. You can see that we require up to 1.8 spaces if it's a three-bedroom dwelling.
Can I just pause us? Do we need to go through this at this point? HB 1183 also has already been signed by the governor, which has some more extensive commentary on parking. I would rather focus on the stuff we have a say on. I, I don't mean to cut you off, but we've got a whole lot of slides left and I'd rather focus on the things that we have any say over at this point, which I would say we don't on the parking question.
The, the only other thing I would, I would say about that is that we're not required to adopt 5184 for 18 months from its effective date. So I tend to think that any developer would just wait until those standards are into our code and effective before applying for a permit with us. I do just want to, in all transparency, say that we're not required to adopt them just yet. But if planning commission wants to direct us to just draft, draft this code with the state-required parking minimums that will go into effect soon, I think we'd ta, we'd take that direction.
Okay, then I will make a motion to direct staff to not wait the 18 months and draft code per what's going to be state code. You know, if it's going to be anyway, let's not slow a project down to make them, you know, wait any amount of time for what's going to become reality anyway.
I second that motion.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? It appears to be unanimous.
Thank you, yeah. I also added a slide just to let the community know that there are two, two major transit routes that serve this area, one frequent all-day route scheduled. And then another route that is all day that goes to places like Bothell, Woodenville, Park and Ride, and all the way up to, to the Brickyard Park and Ride as well. So there's that. There's the summary of the bill, sounds like we know about that. So the next couple of slides are talking about public benefits and potential public benefits. I, in the packet, you'll see what we've studied. And we ask for, or our recommendations include things that we feel are proportional to the up-zone, but we haven't had time to fully explore other potential benefits, especially some that have been raised by our, our, our community members. So the planning commission should feel empowered to direct staff to draft code for other public benefits that you'd like to see, things like sustainability benefits or native vegetation, green space, other kind of public improvements that pertain to the public open space, things like that. But the intent here is to provide the public with increased access to connections within the Wanita Business District. So we can do that by requiring pedestrian access easements or through-block connections waterward of the intersection, similar to the public comment we received of moving the park-to-park connection back a bit. In addition to that, we could use the enhanced intersection improvements that we're thinking about to create the park-to-park connection with the active transportation focus, so bike lanes, shared use path, things like that. We're working with our transportation department to get you an exhibit on what that would look like and the, the specifics on that. But we're recommending that as an option. If you chose not to employ any public benefits, there are some other regulations that we have to at least get some increased pedestrian-oriented space. But we're recommending that we do move forward and fulfill the community's wish through the intersection improvements.
Commissioner Jacobson?
I support the staff recommendation. I am interested in some language. It doesn't need to, I don't think it should be in the baseline draft that we'll make a motion on. But I am interested in some language, in particular, looking at moving that park-to-park connection. I understand it might be complicated, but I'd be interested in that option.
Okay, so exploring something waterward of the intersection as well?
Yeah.
As the intersection improvements?
Yes, but would be as our baseline.
Commissioner Reiser?
Staff, can they put the park-to-park connection in the buffer zones?
We have minor allowances for walkways in critical area buffers. They're a little bit more expensive to build. They come with a little bit heavier requirements because we have to mitigate the impacts, but we have seen it done. The boardwalk at Totem Lake is one example.
If they can flexibly put that in, I, I think that's also a good mitigation.
Commissioner Rosman?
On that note, since that would really be kind of like a city parks item, if it's more expensive and maybe if that's the reason why it would be hard to do feasibly for development, are there city dollars to make that connection? Because if it really is a park item, it seems like, I would hate to lose that as an option just because it doesn't work feasibly with the project if the city could maybe show up and use park dollars or something to make that connection happen. I don't know, but I'd love to at least explore that as an option.
I think we can, I think we can do that. So we've, we've had some conversations with other experts, like our city attorneys here at City Hall, to talk about what we can require. And we might need to calibrate the cost of constructing an improvement like that versus getting the easement with development and then looking at a potential city project or a partnership to actually build it. But getting an easement set aside would be one step and I think the time to do that probably would be with this project. So we can continue to explore that and I think we can bring it as an option.
Granted, I think potentially if, while they're building out the site, they may be able to do it more cheaply than the city. So I'd like to keep our options open, whether that's an easement or just a, you know, maybe it's a reduction in impact fees or something in trade for, for that construction.
Any further discussion before recommendation? Anyone want to make a recommendation?
Sure. I recommend option B with a note to study the option for a waterward pathway and whether that is, you know, an easement or some sort of like impact fee deferment or other, you know, city involvement. Not making that a strict requirement of the site, but let's, you know, make it happen if feasible. Second. I was long, sorry.
I captured as a, all right. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Seems to be unanimous.
Moving right along, similar but a little bit different. Public open space relates to how the private, how the parcel itself provides public amenities by creating open space. So just to streamline this a little bit, I will relay the options. We can apply existing design regulations that already are adopted to require corner treatments and pedestrian-serving improvements, pedestrian-serving improvements between the sidewalk and the building. That's what I alluded to earlier. The specifics are in the, in the development standard table on what those would look like. The specifics are in the in the development standard table on what those would look like. I didn't want to add them to the screen, but they include updates to our design regulation chapter to include the JBD four zone in those required areas where certain improvements would be required. So we could do that. And then, so that would apply to building corners to provide the treatments and then improved pedestrian-oriented street standards as well. So things like onsite lighting, paved walking services, and enhanced access from the sidewalk to the property. There's another option to require through the zoning code rather than to rely on design regulations, require a certain amount of publicly accessible space, leaving it flexible to where that exists, but it should extend into the public realm. It has to provide a transition between public and private spaces, and there can be, if you wish, some minimum dimensions associated with that to prevent any narrow strips or alleys. You can also provide, none of these options. We're recommending option A for flexibility and utility. With that option, you can recommend alternatives to the square footage requirements if more or less is desired. Oh, excuse me, I think that is supposed to be for option B. And then for option C, design regulations would still apply as written with some other sections of 92 requiring public gathering space towards the right-of-way. So even if we did nothing, we would get a little bit of open space, but with option A, it's a, it's a stronger requirement, and that guarantees the activation of the corner.
Commissioner Rosman?
I'm going to motion to recommend option A, which is staff's recommendation.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Right, hopefully the, that, those are the meatier ones. I think the next few will will go pretty, pretty swiftly. Land use buffer requirements, we require a 15-foot-wide landscape strip with a six-foot fence or screening of some sort. We could continue that regulation. This is where it would apply. It would only apply to the the portion bordering the park as they wouldn't be required to buffer from other JBD zones. We could also require an alternate buffer of the same size that's more open and more inviting and kind of connects to the park better rather than separating from the park. And so we could omit the requirement for a fence. It should be noted that buffers can be modified through an established process in our code, so if we didn't require an alternative buffer, they could still propose that if they'd like in future development.
Commissioner Reiser?
I would be in favor of a more open, considering it is a natural park.
Commissioner Rick Jacobson?
Agreed.
Require it.
Mm-hmm.
What, not, not require the fence, I think?
Yes, yeah. Well, I would almost say, do we need to require a buffer at all? I would almost go with an option C, which would be no buffering required, which is typical for the rest of JBD. I don't know where other folks are feeling, but I, you know, if we want to talk about cost to the site, I'd much rather focus on things like the waterward connection and the pedestrian experience, et cetera, and not a buffer for buffer's sake, especially because that would only be for the Cathcallye site, not the Michaels one, which would be an even more, I think, onerous requirement on a smaller site. So I don't know where other people are at, but I'd be good with not requiring a buffer at all.
Park itself seems a buffer, right?
And the, and the buffer of the wetland, too. I will say that the Cathcallye site is largely encumbered by the, what could be a potential buffer and the wetland itself. So right there, where the cursor is, is approximately where the wetlands stop, and then if you add a buffer, like they're, they're working with a minimal amount of space, and so it creates kind of a natural buffer by itself.
I was just wondering what was there and what would the property setback be? So they wouldn't be building a building all the way to the property line, would they?
I don't think so. I don't think they'd be allowed to with our critical area requirements.
What about that little piece of land that is not wetland? How close could they build to it?
Like up, up here, you mean?
Yeah, at the, right at 98.
Oh, like over here?
Well, okay, so you go up, go down a little bit more, right where the buffer zone is, right at that corner, what would the property setback be? Could they build a building right up to it?
We're recommending zero setbacks. That's the existing setback requirement, but there are also structure buffer standards with our critical areas. So even after the buffer, there's an additional 10-foot buffer for any structures. Does that answer your question?
No, my question really is, if we don't require a buffer, could they build to the property line?
It, it depends a little bit what the wetland buffer is. So we don't know the wetland buffer until we technically type the, the wetland. There's a range that could apply, the smallest one being, I think, 75 feet, and that's, even at the smallest buffer, it's, it's gonna, I think, extend along most of that property line. So I think that the wetland buffer is going to be potentially more restrictive than a landscape buffer or a setback would be.
Okay. Commissioner Jacobson?
With that, I will second Rosman's suggestion.
So I guess I motion for the unlisted option C, which is no buffer requirement.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
Thank you. Related to that, we're not recommending a change in the setbacks. The setbacks establish what structures or improvements can be permitted within areas adjacent to and interior from the property lines. Oops, I think that, yeah, that's all we had for this. If if the commission wants to adjust these, they should give that direction.
I'll motion to go with the staff recommendation with no changes.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Great, so this is the last one that I think has a, the applicant is requesting something specific that with the staff doesn't, that doesn't align with the staff recommendation. So the applicant has expressed interest in exploring renter-occupied affordability requirements. So normally, and what is our staff recommendation to retain, is that we require a 10% set aside of all units at 50% AMI for renter-occupied and a 10% set aside of 80% AMI for owner-occupied units. The question, I guess, on the table is if the commission wants to adjust the inclusionary zoning requirements for the site, and if the, if the applicant is still online and you have questions regarding this, they, they might be able to answer that, but that was their, their request for increased flexibility.
Commissioner Jacobson?
First, a question. Would they still be eligible for MFTE if they went with a 80% AMI for the 10% being affordable?
Let me double-check on that, but I don't think so.
Yeah, that, that was my thinking.
Yeah, I can answer that. You have to have 20% at 80 to be eligible for the 12-year MFT.
Is the eight-year?
Eight-year, you can, there's no affordability requirement.
Well, like I said earlier, I'm not interested in budging on this. I think housing affordability is important. I understand it's a big request, but I would rather give more flexibility on everything else.
Commissioner Rosman?
I guess potentially with that, I would love to talk maybe about more flexibility with an MFTE also. If we're requiring 10% at 50, you know, the city of Seattle and other areas of the state have a matching affordability rent requirement to the number of years the MFTE is given. It is only a few cities on the East Side that requires a forever affordability attached to that. So, you know, potentially, we could keep the 10% at 50, but match the 12-year MFTE to the 12-year affordability requirement, which makes it a much more feasible option, though 50% is still really hard. So, you know, I'd also be willing to look at other flexibility on top of that.
Commissioner Jacobson?
I'm open to a conversation. I don't know where I'd land on it, but I think that's a different conversation, not, I don't want, I don't want to pause this project to argue about that for a while.
Commissioner Medea?
I like where Commissioner Rosman is going, but to Commissioner Jacobson's point, is there an agreement we can reach tonight that would still allow us to have that conversation in the future?
Jacobson?
I don't think the recommend, I don't think choosing the baseline for this, for the going into the public hearing prevents us from, or requires us from doing anything. Should I make a motion or?
I guess I would just suggest including, like, looking into options for flexibility beyond just requiring the 10%.
Sure, so I move that we direct staff to keep the existing affordable housing requirements, but consider options for more flexibility to improve project feasibility, given that the 10% and 50% is a tough requirement.
Second.
Does that sound, does that work with staff?
Yeah, I think that gives us enough to work on something to bring back to you.
Yeah, the other, sorry, Chair Rutherford, the only other thing I would add really quickly is that the city council is interested in looking at the MFTE program. So we're in the very early stages of working on a scope of work that would get baked into an RFP that would have a consultant look at our, more broadly, at our MFTE program and make suggestions for improvements if that's something that's ultimately identified. So I just wanted to let you know that's, that is sort of in the works as well.
Commissioner Jacobson?
One thing I would note is my understanding is MFT does not, strictly speaking, fall under the Planning Commission's purview because it falls under the municipal code. I think our, our discussion here makes it seem like we'd all be interested in being part of that conversation.
That is correct. It is in the KMC. That said, you know, we can brief the Planning Commission as that process moves, moves forward.
Cool, then, separate from that, I think we would want that, but I think we have a motion and a second.
All right. All those, any further discussion, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right.
Thank you. Okay, high-performing building standards, it's a, this one's more of a yes or a no. We heard from the applicant both, actually, that these are, these requirements can be cost drivers for projects. The goal and intent of high-performing buildings is to promote things like building efficiency and reduce energy use in buildings, move us towards decarbonization, and promote healthy indoor air quality, reduction in pollution. They're more focused on the building itself and how it operates, but it does have some, my understanding is that some of the programs that qualify for our high-performing building standards include other improvements that relate to like bike facilities and storage for alternative modes of transportation. So we can, we're recommending either to not or to require. I think we have a loose recommendation here to require. It's typical, sorry, I'll just add that we've added it to recent, other recent upzones like the station area and the Bridle Trails Neighborhood Center. So that's kind of the, in line with the thinking to require it here.
Commissioner Jacobson?
I don't know that I am feeling, I'm feeling very uncertain on this. I would, I would like both options available going into the public hearing. I'm fine with either one of these options being our baseline. So I'm, I'm fine, given that the owners have expressed that it is a difficult requirement to meet, I'm fine with option B being our baseline if we have the option at the public hearing to require it.
Is there additional information that staff can gather to help you inform on a decision here, like more information about the standards or?
I think more information about the standards and also making sure that the developers come ready with information on it, because I'm sure they'll, they'll have a lot of information, and that will be very helpful in making the final decision.
Cool.
Commissioner Reiser?
Is there flexibility in the building standards? I mean, do they get a menu, just like the design review, where they can choose different options to be included in their building?
I can take that one, Commissioner Reiser. There's some optionality within the standards. For example, it requires a building to achieve some type of third-party certification like LEED or like passive house, though I know that one's not super comparable to LEED. I'm just blanking on the other options that are more comparable.
Built Green.
Thank you, Built Green. Appreciate the assist. So there's some optionality in that, but the, there are other standards that are more set, like requiring a certain amount of parking spaces be EV-ready and things like that. So there's some options, some more strict standards. I think we could do a quick analysis of that for you all to bring to the, to the hearing, and in terms of bringing both options to the hearing, that's really easy on this one. It's a yes or no.
And our code does say that the applicant can propose, and we can approve, alternate certifications that aren't listed. Some of the ones listed are the Living Future Institute's Living Building Challenge, Living Community Challenge, the Pedal Recognition, Zero Energy or Core Programs, Built Green, and LEED are ones that are elevated in the code.
Commissioner Rosman?
So I guess I'll just make a note, as someone who has been involved in building LEED Platinum since 2010, and I've been at LEED AP since 2012, so clearly, this is something that I care about deeply. That being said, what our code requires and what the state energy code requires, and the fact that this building is right, you know, in a, an area with lots of community amenities and whatnot, they're going to get 90% of the way there. And as much as I love to see as many certified buildings as possible, I don't think that it's incrementally worth requiring it if a, the person who's, the companies that's going to be developing hasn't done it before. You know, there are a lot of other things that move the needle a lot more because of where we're at. If we were building in Wyoming, I would feel differently, but in Washington and in Kirkland, I'm not, like, we're talking incremental difference here between what's already required as a baseline. And, you know, our single-family homes do not have any of these requirements, and more dense mixed-use buildings have a far, far lower footprint to begin with. So I do not think it is equitable to require our most efficient housing type to be the one to have the more onerous requirement. I say onerous as someone who's been doing this for, you know, 15 years, but as far as affordability and feasibility, I, I don't think that I want to see that as a requirement.
Any further discussion or anyone like to make a motion? Or is it clear direction, clear all ready to staff?
I don't know. I think I was a little stronger than Aaron on this one, but that said, I'm willing to talk about them both at the public hearing. I just, I will not be budging on this one.
Jacobson?
This is why I was feeling, this is why I was open to having the baseline that, that staff comes to us with being no requirement, and then having to make a motion to introduce a requirement. I'm comfortable with that being how we go.
Is there any dissent? Or I see Commissioner Medea as right.
Just a point of clarification, because the slide is a bit confusing. In the range of options, the middle row, option B is do not require, but then below that, staff recommendation says option B require.
Oh, sorry about that. Yeah, so option, where we, our recommendation was to require, just in alignment with other recent upzones, but it was like a loose requirement is what I mentioned.
I like Commissioner Rosman's expert opinion and recommendation to not get, to not die on this hill, given. on this hill, given all the reasons that she mentioned.
All right. Anyone want to make a motion, or do you have enough direction?
Sounds good.
All right.
Okay. Signs. Unless directed otherwise, we would employ a sign category of E to the mixed-use line, the new use category that's being established. The code currently regulates developments with multiple uses and then recommend, or requires that property owners submit a letter allocating allowable sign area for the development to the various uses. So, we have a way of regulating signs in mixed-use developments now, and our typical sign category for those types of uses is, is sign category E.
Mr. Jacobson?
I'm fine with the staff recommendation. I don't think we need a motion on this.
Yeah, I admit, I do not know sign classification, so I'm happy to just, like, carry on through with this, and if we hear any opposition, then we can address it at the hearing. Any concern with that?
Moving on to lot coverage, there is a request for a slight increase. Currently, there's an 80% maximum. The applicant has requested to increase that to 90 or even 100. Our recommendation is to grant the increase to 90, recognizing that our critical area buffer requirements will likely make a 90% lot coverage very unlikely. And also, there aren't many stormwater implications since the runoff goes to the bay, or, excuse me, to the, to the lake. So, I talked to our, our public works engineers, and they don't see an issue with the slight increase. So, for those reasons, we recommended it for added flexibility.
Mr. Jacobson?
I support the staff recommendation.
Mr. Reiser, uh, Rosman?
I, I honestly would be okay with a maximum of 100% because the limitations are going to be less. If potentially, that means that they can have 91% lot coverage, and it makes sense, like, I, I don't see why we would not put 100 instead of 90. Unless I'm missing something. I just, I think there are other constraints that are going to determine how much lot coverage and not necessarily needed outside of that, because most of JBDs 100%, right? Yeah.
Jacobson?
I just want to say, I've changed my mind to agree with Commissioner Rosman.
Do we make a motion to that effect, or just carry on and speak up if commissioners, if anyone disagrees?
We're, it sounds like consensus around 100%. Okay. Thank you. Last but not least, the review process for the JBD 4 zone currently requires design review through the design review board. The staff recommendation is to retain the design review requirement, although there is no specific staff recommendation on what form that takes. So, whether it's administrative design review or design board review, if the commission has a recommendation there, we are happy to hear it.
Mr. Jacobson?
Like I said earlier, I think we should give flexibility. I don't want to get into a big argument over whether we should have design review. In this case, I think it allows us to move quicker if we still have it. So, I support. I think we should direct staff to draft code that allows the developers to pick whether they want to go before the design review board or through administrative design review.
Any dissent from that point? All right. Seeing general agreement?
Okay. And I think here is where Ally wants to hop in with a time check.
All right. We're at 97 minutes on that, on that section?
Yes. So, it is 9:37. I'd, if you'll allow me, like, to give you a preview of what the rest of the items we have on your agenda hold. So, we just walked through the Michaels development standards. Thank you. We need to, at some point, do the same for Goodwill. I will say that the develop, the types of development standards we're talking about are the same, so I would anticipate, this isn't a leading comment, but you might be able to get through it a little quicker, and you just got through Michaels, because we've already explained what things are. You also, on your agenda tonight, do have an introductory briefing on the critical areas ordinance. We expect that presentation is about 15 to 20 minutes, plus any commissioner questions. So, we can do both. We can do one, we can do none. If the critical area ordinance briefing is pushed, the next available meeting looks like it would be May 22nd, because your May 8th meeting, I'm going to call it full. Same deal, I think, on the Wanita, or, sorry, I think you're, we're already scheduled to come back on May 22nd for the Wanita, for a public hearing, but that was one of the questions tonight, so.
All right. Mr. Rosman?
I'd rather focus on getting through the Goodwill stuff, especially because we have two very interested applicants. And when we went through the planning work program, we said, if we had people potentially wanting to develop in a very difficult market, we were going to, you know, treat them as priority. So, I think priority would be doing this tonight, and potentially, hopefully, not being 90 minutes.
All right. Commissioner Jacobson?
I agree, just for the sake of, the benefit of staff, I don't, I don't want us to try and do both, and then only do one, so we can let the people working on the critical area go home if they need to. So, do we want to try to do the critical areas tonight?
No. Is it?
Sorry.
We're going to have, like, the Late Late Show for critical areas? No. Or, or, you know, I don't know. I. I mean, I, the, we, lesson learned, this took longer than, than expected, but I think it would be better to say we're not going to be able to do it tonight. When is the deadline for the critical area compliance?
End of year. We have some buffer built into our existing schedule. Oh. Because we've, yeah, learned that's a good idea, just in case. So, if commission is okay with it, we'll plan on pushing that item, releasing those staff members, thanking them for their attendance in the audience tonight, and then we'll hop to Goodwill if that's okay with the commission.
I, I think that's, that's okay, yeah. I just, I lament that we won't be able to hear from them quite yet, but, and, but thank them for sticking around and, you know.
But let's get moving.
All right. Okay, let's go. Okay. All right, here we go.
Yeah. We do have another two-hour time check coming up at 10 o'clock, so let's proceed and.
All right. Okay, moving right along. I'm going to speed through just a little bit, but I'll clarify any differences. We have a discussion on density and uses that is a little unique to Goodwill, so we'll kind of focus there. To remind you, the request includes all of the following. Their request also includes a minimum density of 70 units per acre across all three sites, and flexibility in allowed housing types. So, currently, the BC-1 zone does not allow townhome development. We'll provide some options for you for that. They also are looking for reduced parking requirements, although not quite as low as the state mandate. Vertical articulation at 45 feet rather than upper-story setbacks, and increase in lot coverage, some height transitions through the sky-exposure plane method, and then just general zoning resiliency and flexibility for future development. So, for uses, I think that the main takeaway here, we heard from the applicant about the benefit of adding townhomes as an allowed use. There is, this is a large site with fair transit, but recent projects in the northeast station, or northeast 85th Station Area have been flagged, similar developments that would produce townhomes, or attached dwelling units, as we call them in the code, have been sort of flagged by our council, recognizing that the project's density isn't quite aligned with the vision for that area. So, we're interested in hearing planning commission's opinions on allowing that type of housing that is inherently less dense within the North Wanita Study Area, and to what extent? Like, do you, we could provide regulations that concentrate that type of housing away from the intersection? There's some ways to make it so that the townhomes don't front the street, or although there are ways to provide townhomes or attached dwelling units that are still pedestrian-oriented through, like, stoop frontage requirements and those townhomes that often abut residence or roads to increase pedestrian activity. So, the applicant request, we'll start with uses, ignoring the density conversation if possible, and then I have some questions about that as well. So, if we can learn from the planning commission, if you have a preference on just if attached dwelling units are an appropriate use for the site, we can develop draft code that regulates what that might look like and where, given PC direction, for the community to react to. So, options would be to continue to prohibit attached dwelling units in BC-1. We can allow them only within the context of mixed-use development, although it's been raised that seeing a mixed-use development with townhomes or attached dwelling units and mixed-use development is, is rare. Those types of developments don't usually happen together, but we could, we could regulate it that way, or allowing them outright as an independent use is another option.
Commissioner Jacobson?
This site has worse transit than the Michael site. It has worse transit than the 85th Street Station Area, much as I would very much like for us to be able to get a lot of housing here. I think we need to, we need to acknowledge the market realities right now, and I would rather have some amount of housing, even if it's not ideal, sooner rather than later. The fact that the applicant is even asking for this, to me, suggests that they're really serious about moving forward sooner, and that this is a real potential constraint for them. So, I am supportive of option C.
Mr. Rosman?
Can we bring forward all three options on this one, honestly? I, I think we need some more discussion before I would settle on one of these, echoing Commissioner Jacobson's comments as a whole. I would love to see all three of them come back for a public hearing, to be honest.
My, my understanding, the request from staff, was that the draft code, ideally, there would be, like, one thing that they draft, but we could consider other options, have those options on the table. Does that sound like a reasonable path for the commission? And is that an accurate representation of?
It is, yeah. Is there a default that we could write into the draft code that you all would prefer? It, it won't really matter, since we're providing alternate options anyway, but just to what I can put in the code.
Mr. Reiser?
Okay. My question is, is this going to be site-specific, or is this going to mean that, like, any future development in this area could include townhomes also with?
Any BC-1 zoned area?
Yeah. So, I'm, I'm basically asking, is this setting precedent?
I, yeah, I think that we'd be looking for direction on that, whether or not it should apply to the entire zone. I think when I, when we were writing these up, we were allowing, we were, option C was to capture the study area, but it's worded differently, I understand. So, we would be asking, asking the commission to provide input on that.
Mr. Jacobson?
I don't want this, I don't, I don't want us to have, make a decision that has, like, wide-reaching implications on the whole neighborhood center. I would be inclined to have the default be option C to allow them, but only within this study area, with, with the language that would allow us to ban attached uses as well.
Commissioner Rosman?
Could there be a way to, like, make a note that to allow, like, townhomes as an allowed use would require some level of development agreement or some sort of, like, convert, like, not by right, but like, make it be like an additional ask? I don't know if I want to do a full development agreement, but I, I would love for it to be like a variance type of thing or something. But maybe this is something we can, you know, see what you could be creative with and come back.
Yeah, we're, we're open to exploring what that might look like and reviewing that with you next time.
Mr. Reiser?
I would just rather see their option B as a little bit less if that was, you know, if it was cost-wise that they, you know, felt that option B was, I, I would rather see that first, but I would not want to hinder having housing built. So, I, I think the variance would work, because they could come to us and ask, okay, B doesn't work, you know, A doesn't work, B doesn't work, we would like the variance for C.
All right. I'm afraid, do you have a good sense of?
I think so. So, we're going to be working to provide a draft code that still allows options for independent townhome or attached dwelling unit use, and then bringing those same options at public hearing, and then providing a little bit more information, if possible, on, on the implications, I guess, for developers, or, yeah, it might be a little fuzzy on the, on the recommendation.
I, I think I'm sort of hearing some coalescence around some version of option B from the commission, in your interest in only working on this site for now, so we can maybe create our own hybrid from what we've heard tonight, unless any commissioners disagree with that approach, and then make sure that we bring all of the options forward for the hearing. Okay.
Option C, that's, option C, but specific to just the study area?
Yes.
Okay. As opposed to B, which is, they would have to do a mixed-use development in order to enable townhomes? Okay. That works. Thank you. Moving along. Ground floor requirements, again, they, the applicant's request here is similar to our Michael's team. They are looking for a minimum of 60% active frontage along 100th only, a 25-foot average commercial depth requirement, minimum first-floor height of 15 feet, which is carried over in our staff recommendation, and then an allowance for residential ancillary uses can qualify as an active use. That's a little bit different from the, from, I think, the, oh, okay, sorry, I'm getting backwards. So, they are requesting that those uses qualify as an active use. So, for option A, we could go with applicant's request, or we can modify it to your liking, but still use the, the base, the methodology of a minimum, a linear frontage and a minimum depth or average retail. Option B would be to require a certain percentage of the building's ground floor, which we've heard opposition to. And then option C is require 1/100 to provide commercial ground floor uses oriented to the street, and allow residential or commercial uses along Northeast 132nd. That's a, the carryover from if we decide that townhome development or attached dwelling units are appropriate for the site, then we would be looking to hopefully allow both residential and commercial use to front Northeast 132nd. So, I, I don't know if they're exclusive of each other, I'm realizing.
Mr. Rosman?
I'd be happy with the applicant request with the caveat of, I know that in some zones we have, like, a percentage limit that is allowed to be, like, leasing and fitness centers and whatnot, and I think having that caveat to, especially what Commissioner Reiser has brought up previously, about making sure it's not too much. So, I would say applicant request with the caveat of a, a hard cap on. So I would say applicant request with the caveat of a hard cap on percent being residential type.
All right, I agree with that.
Moving on. Oh, sorry, I have another slide. Just making sure, I think we've covered everything here. As far as the commercial requirements applying to both, I think we're, we gathered around the fact that it should be, well, for the Michael site, we recommended only majority along Northeast 122nd. So do we want to carry that over and only require commercial along the north-south corridor of 1/100 to kind of lead into and create synergy with the rest of the commercial zone? Or should we also require commercial to apply, or commercial requirements to apply along the east-west, which is next to the fire station and whatnot?
Commissioner Jacobson?
If, this feels like a nice-to-have, I would very much like to have the commercial extend along 132nd, but I also don't want to hold the project up over it.
Could we put in, we just encourage it?
I'd wondered about like, this would be kind of a cool place for townhomes where you could run a business out of your like?
Live-work.
Yeah, yeah, like a live-work sort of space. I mean, I have no idea like building code complications with that, but you know, we have home-based business requirements like in detached family zones, but do we allow that? And I mean, I'm sorry, I'm like horribly complicating this at a late hour, but you know, like, I know, right? Like, rein me in, rein me in.
We recommend on, and we recommend commercial and otherwise require on 1/100.
Yeah.
Yeah?
Yeah, that's good. Yeah, I don't, I'm not talking about requiring, I'm just thinking, like, let's make flexibility.
Similar to the other discussion, we would, we plan to add a plate, since this is not a design district, we would add a plate to our zoning code that designates both 100th Avenue Northeast and Northeast 132nd as pedestrian-oriented streets, again, to capture the improvements necessary along those designations. Although the applicant has requested and the city has also supported through their staff recommendation, our staff recommendation, an enhanced right-of-way improvement, similar to the Michael site. So those would supersede any pedestrian-oriented street improvement requirements. So we're looking at the possibility of 14 or so wide sidewalks to encourage pedestrian movement.
Commissioner Jacobson?
Moving us along, I think we all support the staff recommendation.
Great. All right, circling back, and I don't think we're quite ready to have this conversation since we didn't land on whether or not townhomes would be allowed. But part of the request for attached dwelling units as an allowed housing type was they were hoping to employ a sort of minimum density to apply site-wide, not parcel-wide, so it wouldn't apply to any specific phase of a project. But throughout the three aggregated parcels, they should eventually achieve 70 dwelling unit per acre site-wide. So that would mean removing the, we would, we're recommending to remove the density restrictions of 900 square feet per unit regardless. But if you're interested in exploring a minimum residential density, applying site-wide, I think staff would need to work to better understand how the phasing development works in tandem with minimum density requirements. So if one project came along and it was townhomes, a significantly lower dwelling unit per acre, what implications does that have for the rest of the study area? We would want to look into that more, which if directed, we can definitely do that. But regardless, we would be looking to remove the density restrictions and have no maximum density requirement, or a density that would be governed by development standards instead of a unit count, unit square footage.
Any concerns on the staff recommendation, general agreement on that, I'm guessing?
Is the staff recommendation option B?
It's technically undetermined. Regardless, it's part of option B, which is to remove the density restriction of 900 square feet per unit. So we were looking to do that anyway, but the minimum density is a little bit foreign. So we would need to do a little more analysis and bring that back.
I'm fine with removing the density restriction. Let, I would, I am interested in you coming back on the density minimum.
Yeah, I mean personally, if there's, I'm often a little skeptical of density minimums. I could see them potentially being justified in areas near major transit investments, which this is not. So I'd be hesitant to anchor this project with that.
I think that's getting into the debate over whether we should have, allow townhomes or not, and I think this is just going to be downstream of that.
They are closely related. So if we did allow townhomes as the independent use, this might not matter as much.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, more to come. Building height, similar requests across the aisle for both sites, 75 feet being the kind of sweet spot for unlocking vertical capacity and creating a viable project. We have an option to allow 75 feet except in the portions adjoining a low-density zone, which looks like this according to our definition of adjoining. So in that, if we did go with option A, the red box represents the area of the site that would have a 60-foot requirement, although this is also the same, this is the same area that would be regulated by the transition height angle that we'll go over in just a second. So we could do that. Staff is recommending to just forego that tiered option, sorry, I'll go back. So option A is a tiered option, option B is just 75 feet outright. We're recommending option B because the topography of the site as it stands is, it's going to result in a similar effect where there's taller buildings concentrated towards the intersection due to how it slopes down. And then near the low-density residential zones, there, since it's ABE, average building elevation, and that doesn't incorporate multiples, or it's per structure, but typically if they built like how they showed, then naturally it would slope and it would be less tall towards the back.
Commissioner Ryser?
So does this kind of give them free rein though if they do build townhomes, that we get some gigantic townhomes? Shouldn't there be some kind of regulation if a townhome is built that it's limited to three stories?
Yeah, I guess I would encourage, based a little bit on the statements that we made earlier about writing the code to reflect any potential option that you'd want to see, which means if you don't want to see 75 feet of any building towards the back, you should direct us to decrease the height as you get further back. So if we allow 75 feet, the option of doing one apartment building that fills the majority of the site would still be an option under the zoning code. We typically don't regulate height by structure type, so we, I don't think we'd be recommending to like put an extra height regulation on a townhome versus a stacked type of housing product here.
And I will say that the current BC1 zoning has a use line for attached or stacked dwelling units, or excuse me, attached dwelling units is my understanding. And there's a height limit for that independent use. This height limit would, is hopefully going to be drafted in a way that applies to the new use line, which is mixed-use development. So that's, I think, where we would be allowing 75 feet is just for that type of development.
Okay. I mean, I'd rather see that it was built out without the townhomes and we got the housing. So if it's regulated by a tat, a code that has attached dwelling or units or townhomes are regulated, then great.
Commissioner Rosman?
Does that mean good with option B on this one?
I'm.
Everybody?
All right. Related to that, I wanted to highlight some specific questioning or packet taking us out of the Goodwill site for just a moment. We have received an interest from our fire department to explore height increases for the property directly to the west of our study area. This is Fire Station 24. They have some goals regarding improved training facilities and adding a fourth apparatus bay eventually. They're requesting the height to allow for those fire training towers, that they're hoping to use the back half of their lot to build and to use. The sites currently work together now because there's a fire lane that the Goodwill team has an agreement in place with the fire department or with the city to allow donation drop-offs to exit using that, the fire lane. And our fire department is interested in retaining that access and using it eventually for fire station access for training purposes only. So a fire, a truck can come in through that way as if it was arriving to a scene that needed, that needed help and then using that as, for training purposes only. All that to say, we recommend to allow the increased height. I think their request was for somewhere around like 45 feet, so not the full 75. I don't, I envision, I don't think anything as tall as the buildings that we're, that we're talking about. I'll confirm the specific heights for you if you'd like. But yeah, last time I talked to them, it was like 45 feet-ish. If there are any questions or concerns about that, we would love to know.
Commissioner Jacobson?
Again, the staff one I'm looking at right now is increasing allowed height from 35 feet to 50 feet.
Okay, I think we did add a little buffer for whatever they decide to use.
So realistically, it's probably going to end up at 45 feet in terms of what they actually use.
Exactly.
I'm fine with it.
I was wondering, does that, about the drive, does that mean they're asking for restriction on the fire department, only the fire department would be able to use that drive behind there? Or would that become a public street, the, was it 134th and the wraparound to 98th? I think it is. Or what, what's?
From what I, and I'll confirm, but my understanding is that the lane would operate similarly as it does now where it exists for the fire department parcel, but there's no restrictions necessarily on who can use it. It's going to abut one of those long gates. So if someone were to turn into there that wasn't trying to get to the fire site, they wouldn't be able to in the future, is my understanding. But I'm not too positive about the specifics on if it's like an easement or a right-of-way dedication, I can find that out.
Yeah, I was mostly interested if there's any possibility of that, you know, that street going around the broader site area, be able to be used as a bypass for the other intersection and distribute some of the traffic load.
I don't think that they envisioned it that way, but.
Okay. Fine grain street, that's all I'm, all I'm thinking, but, all right. Any concerns about this? All right.
Back to height transitions, their request includes the 45-degree angle from an existing grade at the property line. This would be applicable to single, or to the portions of the site that abut single-family residences. Their renderings show that even if it's multifamily versus townhomes, this regulating line would control for heights near the neighborhood to the north. I thought I had a different slide, but this is the gist of their request and how it would play out. So for the options provided, we could use transition strategies for the station area that we went over. The angles are less stringent, but they would apply to the entire property line, while the applicant's request is a 45 degree, so a little bit stricter degree, but it would only apply to portions of the site that abut the low-density zone.
Commissioner Rosman?
I'm good with the applicant request on this one.
All right.
Great. All right, these are, so the vertical definition from the right-of-way and the horizontal modulation. For Michael's, we landed on leaving it to our design guidelines and our design regulations to moderate vertical and horizontal scale, wondering if that's the approach we'd like to take for Goodwill as well.
Seeing general agreement, any concerns? All right.
Great. Takes care of that. Parking, just same, same thing. If you'd liked us to draft a code that reflects the state requirements, we're happy to do that.
I'm seeing general nods. Anyone dissent, speak up.
Okay, awesome. Some information on transit, there are three routes, they're not as frequent, but they exist. Public benefits, moving back, again, same thing applies if you're interested in the Goodwill site, exploring additional public benefits other than what has been presented in the packet, we're open to hearing that as well. This is a very large site comparatively, so there are some increased opportunities for pedestrian access and connections, as well as public open spaces, really the one that we're tuned in on as well. But the applicant is requesting just some overhead weather protections that would be required anyway for our design districts. But our recommendation includes some kind of above and beyond bicycle infrastructure options. I haven't fully baked those out with our transportation team, but we have a TSP goal or policy that requests that we, the transportation team, work with the planning department to explore opportunities for added bike facilities, including bicycle parking within the right-of-way. So this could be a great opportunity to provide some additional above and beyond active transportation infrastructure, which we'll, we could provide more details next time on what that means. But just looking to see if the commission supports us exploring that further, recognizing that this could be a good connection for people on Finn Hill to connect to the transit stops nearby, you know, that first-last-mile connection, that place for them to park their bikes, something kind of cool and creative that doesn't exist. Just wondering if the commission is open to us exploring that further, further.
Seeing general agreement?
Yes.
Oh, Commissioner Medea, all right.
Yeah, just what Leandra said, all of that, I love it. Yes, I'm in support.
All right.
I'm excited to bring more back to you guys, I think that is a great opportunity. Public open space at this site, their applicant requests to, as you heard from the Balboa team, they are open to requiring a certain amount of square feet per unit constructed and then having a certain percentage of that total be accessible to the public. This is very flexible. It does not regulate necessarily where exactly it'll be, but we can modify that if you'd like. If it's open to the public, the assumption is that it would probably be near the street at some, but it doesn't have to be. So the option B is most reflective of the staff, or excuse me, the applicant request. We could also do things like noted for Michael's where we require corner treatments through design review and some pedestrian-serving improvements. And we can, or we could also require a certain amount of square feet that extends into the public realm, similar to the options provided for Michael's. to the options provided for Michael's. I will say that their, option A and B aren't necessarily mutually exclusive, but it just does add more requirements for the builder, for the developer, more expensive.
Commissioner Rosman.
I'm good with applicant request on this one.
Any concerns with the applicant request? Hearing none?
And we'll plan to bring back more like actual percentages or actual square feet for you to react to as well, but just kind of conceptually, we're open to, or we will go ahead and move forward with option B. Right, land use buffer requirements for this site are a bit different. I thought, there we go. So this is where the land use buffer requirements would apply. This is, again, the 15-foot requirement. There would be the 15-foot landscape, excuse me. There's a retaining wall here, so I'm not exactly sure how that factors in to our land use buffer requirements, but I can find out. And then this is where the fire access lane would also be. So we are, excuse me, moving back. Staff is recommending to just retain the existing regs and not require any additional buffering between the rest of the BC-1 zone. Almost done. All right, required yards, AKA setbacks. Right now, they're, so the BC-1 zone has a front yards, or a front required yard of 10 feet. For this scenario, this portion of the BC-1 zone, the side and rear yards are 20 feet because they are but residential. We could keep that. We could retain that 20-foot recommendation or requirement, acknowledging that there's the fire lane and the landscape buffer requirements. Or we could reduce the front setback to zero feet, pushing the possibilities forward at the intersection. The sides, we could retain if you'd like, or we could just reduce them all to zero. That would remove the 20-foot requirement.
Commissioner Jacobson.
We have other requirements that are going to enact other buffers. I think it's fine to go with the staff recommendation.
Any disagreement? Hearing none?
The applicant's request for affordability aligns with ours, so our recommendation is just to retain our inclusionary zoning requirements, if that sounds good with the commission.
Commissioner Rosman.
I'd like to, you know, reiterate what we said for the Michael's site and looking at, you know, flexibility requirements, whatever. I think having the same requirements on both sites makes sense as far as affordability.
Commissioner Jacobson.
Yeah, same. I would just, flexibility, and I don't see flexibility as like different requirements, but different policies that might make it easier to comply with, so we might say incentives.
Anyone have a?
Well, I guess one comment, though, is if we are doing townhomes, I would be open to a potential 100% AMI for owner occupied. At least have it in the public hearing as a discussion.
I think that's fine.
Are there consensus around that?
Do I hear any dissent on that point? No concerns? All right. Oh, was that on this?
Go ahead.
I think we just do the same thing as with the Michael's site, have the baseline be no requirement, but with the, with some information both from staff and from, hopefully, the applicants on the costs of the requirements.
Any dissent? Seeing general agreement?
Same with signs?
Yep.
Awesome.
No disagreement there? All right.
Maximum lot coverage. The applicant has requested 90%, so that is what the staff is recommending as well.
I'd go with 100 again, just like we did with Michael's. That doesn't mean that they have to do 100, but I'd like to give them the flexibility.
Anyone have a concern with allowing 100% lot coverage? No?
All right, I think this is, yeah, last one. Review process, same kind of approach? Or? Sounds good. All right, circling back to those questions I elevated at the beginning, I think we've handled the first two really well. Thank you so much for your input. Now just to decide what's next and how we kind of move forward with these reduced ranges and with the staff recommendation and the planning commission recommendation for the draft code. So looking to understand if the planning commission wishes to have an additional briefing to review those refined options, or if we're ready to move to the public hearing. And then I think we've answered the fourth one, too, as we went through. It's like, we do want specific development options, standard options for the identified standards.
Commissioner Medea.
Thank you. So does staff feel they have clarity and direction from us such that we wouldn't necessarily need another briefing? I'm just trying to be sensitive to how quickly we can move this along without also shooting ourselves in the foot if detail gets lost in the translation.
Yeah, thank you. Great point. And I think, I'm comfortable with what's been provided to me. I feel confident that we can provide a great draft code with options where applicable for community and commission response. The one thing I will note is the timing of the public hearing. We still have not brought these projects to city council, so we'll need to do that. We're scheduled to go for an initial briefing and to hear what they have to say about kind of where we've landed on May 20. Two days after that, we're scheduled for a public hearing with you again, so I think that might need to be pushed, and then we would ultimately go back to council for adoption, but.
I would say that we probably want to push it to the meeting after that. I think two days after doesn't make sense, unfortunately.
And I heard that meeting's open.
It is?
What day is it?
That would be June 12th.
June 12th. Sounds good.
I generally agree, though I would just note that we then run into a similar issue with.
Yeah, well, we'd have to extend the adoption date, right?
Mm-hmm.
Exciting. That's all I had. Thank you.
We cut our time in half on that. Should we do this again and like see if we can do a third one and halve that time? All right. Well, let's see. Let me find, oh, wait. This wasn't public. Yeah, 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 okay. Phew, it's like, wait a minute, okay. All right, let me find where we are now.
You have some minutes to review and approve Chair Rutherford.
Oh, yeah, I am. I'm getting there. Okay, so yes, then that is, yes, the next, I'm on the agenda, is the reading and approval of minutes, so. Commissioner Jacobson.
I move that we approve the minutes from February 27th, 2025.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that passes. And next is administrative reports, planning commission discussion.
All right, thank you very much. I'll make this quick. So I had one item of note that went to council that I think most of you are aware of. I sent you a more detailed email this afternoon, but the planning work program was adopted by council at their last meeting. Sent you an email with some revisions they did make from your recommendation. That's detailed in the email. The approved version is attached, but please feel free to reach out to myself or Adam if you have any questions about what was adopted. In terms of what you have coming up next, your next meeting is May 8. You have a public hearing for Washington State Middle Housing Code amendments. That's phase one. You'll also have a briefing on the project to streamline design review regulations and processes. Rush on that one is that we do have to have that one complete before July as well, so we're going to bring that to you. And then on May 22nd, we'll be bumping the hearing for the item we just finished discussing, but you will have your critical area ordinance briefing on that night. So you do already have that staff memo. We'll publish it again, but that'll be the information we're covering that night. Just a couple administrative things. The other item on your next meeting, it's the first meeting in May, so that is when you typically hold officer elections. So we'll be, I have that on the agenda. We'll be doing that at the end of the meeting in May, on May 8. And then just wanted to acknowledge that this was Vice Chair Heiser, even though she's not here, it was her last meeting, so wanted to thank her for her service to the commission. And as of tomorrow, you officially have a new planning commissioner, Julia Nolan, who's been tuned in with you here in chambers all night, so we look forward to welcoming her to the commission. And that is it from me.
All right, sounds great. And yeah, don't worry, they're usually not quite this drawn out, so yeah, this is, it's better from here. All right. Commissioner Jacobson.
I just want to think ahead to the vote on leadership, because my understanding is our tradition has been going by seniority one year. I am open to not going by that, and I bring this up because that would, that's implying that I would be moving up, and I'm open to that not happening.
All right, yeah, it's an interesting situation, and yeah, we need to figure out what is our path forward for preparing people for leadership in the, on the commission going into the future, and so, yeah, we need to be thinking about what is our, what is our path forward? And I'm, yeah, I don't know. Others have thoughts they'd like to share on the topic of?
I think we can hash it out next meeting. It's 10:30.
Sure.
I don't think this is an urgent, right?
It isn't, no.
10:30 at night conversation, but, you know, short-term answers there may also make sense while we settle out with a, you know, musical chairs commission.
Yeah. Sounds good. Anything else that we should, or any other topics? Nothing from staff? All right. Then we are down to our last item for adjournment, which is comments from the audience. Would anyone like to speak either online or in the room? I see a hand raised by Eva. Promote her, and she can introduce herself. Oh, I don't know. Oh, maybe promoted to panelist?
Hi, this is Ingrid Salmon, and sorry, I'm borrowing my daughter's computer. She's Eva, Eva Otterston, but thank you for your time, and I'll be very fast. I numbered everything. I appreciate all your discussion and that you're making allowance for increased housing, which I support. I'm very familiar with the intersection of 100th and 132nd, which is where the Goodwill site is currently, and I go by this nearly every day because I go to the Juanita Community Center just south of Juanita Elementary. I wanted to make the point that this area could really use a community gathering. A town square is something that I sort of fancied, and so I was glad to hear that there was consideration in the project for community, but as much as possible would be great. More housing is excellent. Of course, concerned about the traffic. There's a lot of traffic, and one thing that I would propose to ease that is, of the four bus lines, there's four bus lines. There's 252, 230, 231, and 257, but to grant them the allowance to override the signaling, you don't have oversight over that, but if you're mindful of it, maybe you could push that along. And then to help the pedestrians and bikes go through and increase that ingress egress for those folks over the cars. There's a lot of car movement. It's kind of scary that way, but thank you for your time. I appreciate all the work you've done tonight. That's it.
Thank you, Ingrid. Anyone else? Would anyone else like to speak? Seeing none, we have reached the end of our agenda, and this meeting is adjourned.